Brianna right there is going to push the buttons on the screen and you'll be all set. Have a good meeting.
All right, great. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Tuesday, March twenty-second, twenty-sixth. Welcome to the Citrus Select Board Meeting. And before I get started, I'd like to read our commitment statement to the first behalf of the community motion, which is that a Citrus Select Board is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is a disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards and to support and respect our community. So with that, I'd like to call the meeting to order and acceptance of the agenda. Second by Karen Cantfield, Call of Famer. Let's get started. Are there any questions here in the seat? Seeing none, we will turn it over to Jim Adro for his ministry report.
Good evening. Let's start with annual special town meetings are two weeks, April eighth, twenty twenty-four, seven P M. at the gym. This is our regular time meeting. Please put in your calendar. Reminder that the school override school project is April twenty-second. If not, he's coming up. Please put those both under calendars. Town election is going to be May eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, Seton Ice Cream Gymnasium. Nomination papers are currently available. One-year term for moderator, three-year terms for select board, assessor, town clerk, school committee, planning board, and two for the board of trustees. There is filling a vacancy for the mandatory term on the planning board and for a planning board alter and a five-year term on the housing authority. If you're interested, please call the town clerk's office, seven eight one five four five eight seven four three. Deadline to submit a hundred signatures is this week, last twenty-ninth, at five P M. our office. Steve Mull, the harbor master, has let us know that Smith Marine has a crane barge doing work in the harbor. He'll be doing the work to a boat club in Town Hall. He'll be driving pines for the docks at the boat club and replacing several pines at Town Hall. They're licensed with the combo from Massachusetts, so they should be starting work over the next several weeks. Golf course is scheduled on this Friday, March twenty-ninth. No more dog walking. Please, the crews are out there getting the course ready for the season. We want to thank everybody for their cooperation. Look forward to seeing you this Friday. Friday doesn't look great, but Saturday and Sunday should be nice days. On Saturday, a reminder, the golf course opens early because Saturday morning at nine thirty at Willows Walk is the recreation park egg hunt. Need information on that? Please call the recreation department, five four five eight seven three eight. So the golf course will be open, but it is a delayed opening on Saturday, four P M. egg hunt. Two Citrus Water Health updates. One is they're hosting a mosquito and tick presentation on Monday, April twenty-ninth. From three thirty to five, the Citrus Library and Community Room. Presentation will be in collaboration with the Comicon Mosquito Control Project. Provide helpful tips on keeping your family and you safe from mosquitoes and ticks this summer. Health Department is also hosting the Dana Farber Momography Van on Thursday, May second, seven A M. to three thirty P M. Women age forty and older interested in scheduling an appointment can reach out to the mammography van office, six one seven six three two one nine seven four. Dana Farber will seamlessly contain private mammography films, images, and permissions, ensuring a user-friendly process. The van will be stationed in St. Lucian Episcopal Church across the street from the Town Hall. Want to thank the Reverend Natasha Stewart from the church for their hosting of the van. It's fully licensed by the Mass Department of Local Health, screening mammograms. We conduct it by Dana Farber, skilled technologist, and interpreted by board-certified radiologists from Dana Farber. Got any questions? You can contact Citrus Water Health by email on five four five eight seven two five. Mordecai Lincoln Committee has developed a survey for residents interested in providing feedback on the future use of the Mordecai Lincoln property. Your feedback will play a pivotal role in determining the future of the space. Survey is now available with residents. Please, we encourage you to take a few moments to show your thought by completing the online questionnaire available on Town's Facebook page and the Citrus Town website under Town News. Violet Food Pantry continues to ask for assistance. They're grateful for everybody's donations. The DVD games rate. Cranberry juice, cran, canned mixed vegetables, baked beans, canned mixed fruit, cream of mushroom soup, quick bread mixes, canned white beans, canned white tuna, box flavoured oatmeal, and hand soap. To drop off at the food pantry during operating hours on the fins behind the old gates, Citrus Library, Village Market, and Shaw's. That's what I have for us.
Before I turn it, voting board, I just want to just kind of elaborate a little bit on what Jim brought up. We've had a lot of questions about the second special town meeting and why is there a special town meeting for the school project? So I just want to clarify that we schedule our annual town meeting and our special town meeting in accordance with our charter and with the regular election date on May eighteenth. Unfortunately, we were not receiving approval from the MSDA until April twenty-fourth, which caused us to miss, obviously incorporated that article in the April eighth special town meeting and town meeting warrants. So that is why we need to have a second one. We elected, we voted as board to conduct it prior to the ballot question, which would be on the eighteenth. So that is the reason why there is a second special town meeting is because we could not proceed without the MSDA final approval. So I just want to clarify. With that, any questions for Jim? Okay, thank you. We're going to take a little bit out of order tonight. I know Kathy Harmon is here with regard to poll hours at the very end of the evening, so I don't want to have her stay till ten o'clock this evening if her item is quick.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Kathy, how are you?
Good evening. Thank you very much. Just a little quick request to set the poll hour by request of seven A M. to six P M. Based on the history of the override questions on ballots, in two thousand and fifteen, we had six A M. uh seven A M. to six P M. Prior, that was prior to vote by mail. Right now, I have over two thousand requests for mail ballots based on the cards that we sent out to voters where they checked all elections. I think I'm at twenty-five hundred ready to go. When I get the ballots, again, it's a tighter window. I won't get the ballots until the end of April. So I have people getting the ballot. I'm almost done. All they choose to be filing. So it's a quick turnaround for voters. That'll be doing some public service. In nineteen, we had the gates in the senior center, well, gates, that was seven A M. to six P M. Again, prior to vote by mail. And in twenty twenty-two, we had eight A M. to six P M. poll hours. So at that point, we had vote by mail. That was a twenty-two percent turnout for that election. And that was at thirty-four hundred voters. So if you're comfortable with seven A M. to six P M., great. If it's okay to do eight A M. An hour later to six P M., I'll leave it up to you. That would be my preference, but seven A M. until six was the... After I looked at the numbers and the vote by mail, I went, oh, wait a minute. Your preference is eight to six? Yeah, yeah, because we have so many vote by mail cards going up. It's high because everybody checked that all election box. So I called the state. There's no option for a local election. They have the state primary, presidential primary, state primary, state election, and no local option. So I called and said, what do we do if they checked all election? You got a mail-in ballot for the town. So it is high.
Discussion? Thoughts?
It was great. It's not a little thing.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with eight. Work you have to do and we're using enough time. I know previously I've been skittish about it, but time wasn't as much, but now getting close enough time is
Yeah, I was just going to say, the only thing I would think people might be confused about is not understanding that when they checked out all elections.
They're not going to understand. They're going to give a ballot and go, why am I having a ballot?
Right.
They are.
They need to understand that they can't just show up for an election.
They can't. If I mail them a ballot, as long as they haven't returned it.
Right. But if it's in the mail, they put it in the mail, they can't change their mind.
No.
So I, you know, I appreciate that and I'm sure stuff and I will situate the community TV will do a good job of saying.
They will. They will. The other thing I could have had is select board vote to not do vote by mail, but not do vote by mail. Opt out. Thank you. But I thought, well, that would be weird too, because we have a question on the ballot. Is it the competition or anything? So I could let's just stick with the vote by mail. We've got the requests and for all elections, so it will be confusing.
And does that mean I have the presidential election?
All of them. If you checked all of them, you got a ballot for every single election. If you didn't check, if you checked off the state primary for the fall, but you didn't enroll, didn't tell them about it, you wanted it. I've tried to contact these people and John's orders and they can get back to me. So they don't get a ballot if they're independent or unenrolled.
This is all in the name of making it easier for everyone, but on the other hand, it's confusing. So.
It's so confusing to voters. It'll be fine. It's fine. It's fine. It'll be fine.
Just point of clarification before we hurt Mrs. Cantfield. You're mailing them out the ballots for May eighteen. They have up till that day to walk into Town Hall. Dropbox.
For Town Hall, it's Dropbox.
Or have the polls. They can do the polls.
Oh, I allow it to the polls because we're, oh, my office is not staffed. You can't do it for state elections. Any state election, I'd have to bring it to the Dropbox or my office because it's staffed. But it's Saturday election, so my office won't be staffed. I'm going to go there.
So they can bring it in.
They can bring it into the polls and they can do the Dropbox. And I'll make sure that that's broadcast too, because normally they can't.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Because we have to enter it. That's why.
Right.
But we'll enter them based on the checking list that we have in this case.
Last year's local elections, did we have a mail-in ballot option at that time?
Yes, but it wasn't automatic. You had to request it. It's because the presidential primaries were early in the year and they sent those cards out in January, I think. In January, certainly. Get all the elections. This is great. And then I was like, oh.
Do we have the stats of how many people paid until seven A during the last one?
Oh, I just looked at the hourly count. Sorry. I just looked at all the hourly count sheets. I don't. Off the top of my head, no. For town election, it's minimal, but you know.
That was my feeling.
Doesn't happen. Yes, because you're used to the state elections opening at seven.
Right.
You know, so I can, when I set up the polls, I can also put a notice on the general that polls open every day. It's going to be, it's all my, but.
Yeah, I think as long as, you know, we encourage the folks advocating for, get on the boat to publicize the time, which will be the driving force of this tournament, probably.
All right. Do I have a motion then?
I noticed that poll hours from eight A M. to six P M. for the annual town election, they held on Sunday, May eighteen, twenty twenty-four. The Citrus Library Gymnasium located at six 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 Chicago.
Motion by Karen Cantfield, second by Andrew Wiggrich, Call of Famer.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, everybody.
Thank you.
Happy Easter to you.
Coming in early. Thanks for all you do, Kathy. I see you here at all hours for today.
Thank you. It's fine.
Next to you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. All right. So next we'll move on to accepting some nice donations. We have one gentleman, our chief of fire here. How are you?
Good. How are you?
I'm great. What else we'll look at about?
Yes, we had a request for assistance by a resident. He requested us for our assistance. We responded. We assisted him and he was appreciative and sent us a, and thank you for being close to check.
Totally nice.
We appreciate it as well. And I pass that along for the crew, the form members that responded. This is what we do.
Any thoughts of where the donation will?
Uh, no, I've got a wish list a mile long. I think we're going to work for the staff and probably maybe medical. But then we've got a wish list and items that we'll get going right now. So turn it down. Let's see. See some pricing.
Okay. That sounds good. That was very gracious of this resident. So we thank him for that. Your service and your, your department's service is always appreciated. It's always nice to see a little bit extra like this as well.
Thank you.
Recreations. To live in motion? I'm staying with the, was there any request for anonymity?
There was not.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Motion by Karen Cantfield, second by Karen Connolly, Call of Famer. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you very much.
All right. Have a great night. Okay, second donation, very generous donation, being made in Citrus Recreation Department. So Susan Sampson.
Yes, sir.
All right, nice to meet you. Did you want to talk a little bit about the donation and?
Absolutely. I'm here with Nancy Warren, who is the chair of the Citrus.
Certainly, the very. Excellent. Good stuff.
Thank you. Right. So Rolling Wave Foundation, maybe we work through a little bit. Rolling Wave and Banana had graciously offered to donate three portable bicycle racks. They each own about eight bikes and is donating them to Citrus Recreation Department who has observaciously offered to house them and allow them to be available for collaborative events with bicycle community and also in other contexts around town. So our first exciting event that is being co-hosted with the RAC department and bicycle committee is coming up on April twelve. It's Pedal for the Planet and April twentieth. And this would be the first time that the RAC department and bicycle community would be utilizing these three. They'd be down at Kennedy Beach, which is the end destination to house the bicycles. Hopefully, we'll have more than twenty-four folks there. And it would just be, not have many opportunities in the future to encourage bicycle transportation.
So it's a thought that these racks would move around town, but we have a request further down our agenda for more bicycle racks from the beach commission. So just wondering if there are thoughts as to, is that the intent for these is to utilize them during different events? It's not completely horrible.
This is quite work day, may, my friend, it would have been a announcement, but it looked downtown, but this is the price.
And I'll look to Jim, is the recreation, recreation department prepared to transport these things all around them?
I'm sure they're going to have to get help. I would be a W.
Right.
No, I mean, it's, these are portable also, but they fold up, right? So yeah, so they're pretty manageable. It's wonderful. This is
So. All right. Well, thank you for your generosity. We'll have a vote here, but very grateful for the Rolling Wave Foundation in town. They do a lot of sort of work, so we really appreciate the donation. So thank you. Do I have a motion? Right. Move the board accepted donation, three portable bicycle racks to the Citrus Recreation Department to be used in programs, the RAC departments, bicycle events, and other activities that they host for the bicycle community and community. Motion by Karen Cantfield, second by Andrew Wiggrich, Call of Famer.
Bye.
Thank you. You had a great start. So thank you so much. All right.
Purvements. Okay.
That was good. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Are the Hagers here? Hi, Hannah. How are you?
Good.
Good. So Michael and Susan, can I pronounce Hager correctly?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Well, welcome. So the Hagers are here for an outdoor entertainment permit for Saturday, June, June twenty-second, six to eleven P M. Sounds like you're having a wedding. Congratulations. We were actually hoping for five o'clock and not six. For five to eleven?
Yeah.
Okay. See, that was a big issue. And I noticed that there is in a buddy's letter that was included. Did you hear back from any of your neighbors in a negative fashion?
Nothing negative.
Yeah, which is one, she said, everything she can do, let her, let her know.
Isn't that nice? Okay, great. And it sounds like you're just going to have a DJ in the premises?
Okay.
And they're starting at five or the DJ goes from the full time five to eleven? Okay. All right. Questions? Maybe we just don't have it. Side.
Most of the time, fabulous. Are we excited? Is this, is this good news? All right. All right, good.
Yep. Congratulations. All right, all right. A motion?
Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to Michael Famer for DJ on Saturday, June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, for five P M. to eleven P M. at two thirty-four, first parish.
Motion by Karen Connolly.
Second.
Second by Karen Cantfield, Call of Famer.
Bye.
Congratulations.
All right, thank you.
Enjoy the planning. Try to enjoy a beach. A lot of fun then. All right, we have another new common vehicular license for YY Restaurant. This is China Formay. Hi.
Good evening, school members. My name is Attorney Matthew Chan. I signed this YY Restaurant Incorporated with the personal business owner, Mr. Feng Cheng Yu, is seated behind me in the back row. We are here seeking a new common vehicular license. My client recently purchased the China Formay, which is located at one forty-six Front Street, almost down by the water. They are not planning on doing any changes to the business. It's the exact same menu, no renovations, no new liquor licenses. So for all intents and purposes, it's going to stay exactly the same as it has been.
So everything's just changing or just ownership? They don't have to do anything with the liquor licenses to that go to the transfer? Oh, China Formay. I have my head in the other place. Okay, sorry.
There's no, you know, it's a take.
Now I know. I know exactly where you are. My head is on the other part.
Yeah.
Any questions, Karen?
No, I'm just happy here because I know people don't like change. So when I hear nothing's going to change, it makes a lot of people really happy.
I'm a Citrus resident. I know there's only limited chances for the restaurants around here, so they're not going to change anything.
You're like an institution down there, so it's all good.
And delicious.
And it's so good. Like, dude.
I mean, I live in North Citrus, so it's a little bit of a trend for me, but I'll, I'll still.
Yeah, so no changing the recipes.
No, no change in the recipes, no change in the menu exactly as they say. That's the plan. Just the order.
Love it. Yeah, that's great. Very excited.
Yeah, sure. I've been, I've been, um, put that out, but can you just, what's your experience at restaurants prior to this?
Their, their experience? I don't know their personal experience and I know that they set up the corporation, but I don't have their, their background and how the restaurants have owned and operated in the past. I can get that information. If you want to give us a further calling, speak to people about that. I'm concerned.
It's, I, it's not a big concern. Maybe they can then, they would purchase it with the intent of not doing well. That's always interesting. So we want them to do well. So hopefully they have the experience to do so that. So do we have enough information to transfer our requests to the back part of the buyer? Is that our purview? Really?
Well, they'll go through the board of health.
And the board of health did already provide us with the, their application. They was granted on the sixth of this, of this month.
Well, they're granted on the sixth?
The board of health permit.
That's where they go through all their licenses and experience and, you know, they have a bunch of different requirements. More than upon a bit, which is just allowing them to sell.
Is that something that, I think it may have been the way it printed out on our back up, or is that information that you can add to the permanent progress from this app when it occurs? That wasn't a safe.
We normally do have that, but that's why.
Right.
Yeah, you know how it's called liquor license.
Not for buying a doctor's card.
Because we do them for the ice cream person.
Yeah, they're come great. They're arranged as just.
The business license.
And their ability to serve food comes from the board of health. That's sort of safe. Well, that's, you generally get that information from a liquor license, which is all good now.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
All right.
Move to approve a new common vehicular license to YY Restaurant, new business here, China Formay. And they find a board of health approval.
So. Motion by Karen Cantfield, second by Andrew Wiggrich, Call of Famer.
Bye.
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I can go so. All right. Siski?
Yes.
Come on up.
Thank you.
So this is discussion and vote on the view of the community on behalf of Siski to talk about a shed that is needed to house much of the equipment that you all utilize to keep our town beautiful.
Yep.
So it looks like you researched a couple of different sheds. One through the vote deck, but that wouldn't be ready until January twenty twenty-five.
If we win the lottery, there are currently a number of people, so there's a lottery.
So from what I could tell by the backup, you're opting to go the other route, which is with the shed that you've been quoted. So if you want to talk a little bit about that and where it would go, I know you've worked through it with Kevin Kelly.
Yes, Kevin. So first of all, we were mostly interested if we put place a shed in the back of Town Hall and we looked with Mr. Kelly and the area that we were looking at and that he feels would work for us is when you go down the stairs to the right, there is this blind wall. And he thought that if there would be a shed there, and we also went and looked at the staff room and looked out of the window to see if it would be too close to the window, but and if it would, it would be the view and it doesn't. So he felt that the place there was a good place. The shift that he was suggesting was more lean-to kind of shed. It's just the roof coming down. And as we were looking at sheds, the, the preference that the beautification commissioners have is to have a shed, as noted picture that is up there, with probably double doors that would open up and then we don't really feel the need for a window or if there is a window would be on the, on the side. So on, on the side, that would be facing the window of the staff room or whatever that room is. And so what we have done is looked at big box stores, but the sheds that they have didn't really feel sturdy enough. We have looked online and looked at several companies and sheds that they make. And the company that everybody felt really good about is this pine harder company that is on the cape, just when you enter the cape. And they have very lovely sheds, very sturdily made, and they can make them according to the, you know, where you want the windows, where you want the doors. And the one thing that is not included in here is that the, the setup and delivery cost would be three hundred and fifty dollars. But we haven't researched if there is a cost to go and put a platform down and possibly some stones on top of that, small stones to pick things up. Currently, all of the belongings of the town, really, of everything that we have, belongs in town, are mostly stored at the barn at Donna Bender's house. Some in my attic. There's a lot of stuff in Mary Tanaro's garage and also have most stuff in John Larry Hoover's garage. And things that we have are things like hoses, larger containers for watering, ten gallon pumps. We have all-day decorations and so on and so forth. And then a lot of stuff for shape-shaping, coasters.
Makes, makes good sense to bring all of our assets under one roof.
Well, I know it does mean it's for you, as you mentioned to, to us that, you know, that it should be stored at D W or, you know, whatever, which would be really difficult to access. So.
Does anybody, Jim, have any issues with location at Kevin's? It's going to have like, it seems like a good one.
Nope. It's fine. It's out of the neighborhood.
It's easy for you to access from the back, which is nice.
Yeah, it would matter. Yeah, and he would have a, um, a lock, you know, with, with a number of locks, so that, uh, different people can go and access.
Um, is six thousand, I'm assuming, is a part of your budget?
Currently, you have that.
Um, so you think that's enough for taxes, delivery, installation, and the shed?
We won't pay a tax though.
You don't will pay a tax on this?
No.
No, okay.
So taxes won't.
For this, we are, we're quite good. Questions?
I mean, I, I, the shed, it's, though it does give me great hope. We have all these assets across, and the trust for the business, and they're still there, and of course, you know, being a small town, it is a question for that, but there could be, um.
Yeah, I know, I had talked with Ken about what board rather than getting rid of that, but, um, yeah, it's not as central, and we'll probably do something with that property, so he thought this was a better solution.
But you would probably make profit, I think, too.
Yeah, and that is the one part that we, we haven't, uh, uh, looked at, because we also wanted to talk D W before we get somebody into, um.
Sure we have some stones.
To, 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 yeah.
Kevin's not gonna swallow all of that.
Right, okay.
But, but that's the only thing that is not included in price.
Yeah, and it's in the budget.
Yeah, we have, we have that money.
That was my question.
Yeah, we have that money, kind of squirreled aside, um, and if there is more, because we also have the trust fund to go and, um, access, but we don't think we need that.
Okay. Trust fund. Go ahead, Karen, okay?
What's the, the gift account?
The gift account.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's.
I also have a little seminar, I think, that's, that's, that's.
We don't have a lot of trust funds in the justice operation. We wish.
Yeah.
Anything, Karen?
No.
Great.
I'm sorry, did you get it?
Yeah. Yeah, great. Uh, well, it's a great idea. Thank you for your leadership and bringing forward that it's needed, and, uh, we'd like to get all the assets under one roof. Um, so I'll take a motion if there aren't any additional questions or anything we wanted to add.
No, um, I know we know we have, um, uh, Shipshape Day on the fourth of May. So, that has been.
May fourth, Shipshape Day.
Yeah, and that has been okay, uh, verbally by Michelle.
Uh, and, and you know, I've got this, I, I had an email, I don't know if anyone else did, from someone in Green Bush, purely complaining about the trash around town, especially around Green Bush.
Yeah.
And, but, but I'd like to make sure that we let people know that number one, this time of year, everything was terrible. Um, it's, but it's the only time of year you can really pick up trash.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, because once the leaves start to come in, it, it just gets, uh, obscure, but if we can just let people know that, especially in Green Bush, I think that, uh, the, um, untold crewing was very instrumental last year in working on Shipshape Day, so.
Yeah, and, and, and getting people out in that area, and, um, we now have a really wonderful, up-to-date list of streets and places, and so we usually start collecting information about shape streets before we have Shipshape Day, so that means adding aside people to those streets.
Well, you know, I'd like to suggest that maybe you could, or somebody could go on, uh, Central Community TV and talk about Shipshape Day.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, you know, let people know that the town is well aware of, yes, you know, some places, especially where they're parking up trash barrels and their things. Um, but I think that Shipshape Day should make a big difference, making things a lot better.
And, uh, John Larry Boger is in charge of Shipshape Day. We have, um, uh, shipshape day dot org. Okay, you can email, and, um, um, you know, with information about areas that are in our town that the citizens who live there feel need to be looked at, particularly this right here.
Right.
Like a nip, um. This is, you know, speech, although they have, they're a lot less now than they're.
That's good. I, I do believe that, that get, get out to Green Bush is, is it going to be scheduled for the same day again?
It is, yeah.
So there'll be a ton of activity in that area after, after the cleanup, for the MIs and stuff, so I think that you'll have a lot of folks there.
Okay.
Yeah, and, uh, it's on the fourth, but we, when we give out the materials, um, we suggest to people that are going out that they can either do it on Saturday or on Sunday, or on Monday, so it's like, uh, the, um, D W will be doing the pickup over a number of days. So, before people go home, um, get to Green Bush, they can pick up their trash.
Right. Thank you. Alright, we have a motion with regards to the shed. If there isn't any additional discussion about the shed. Move that select board approve purchase of a shed to be installed in County Hall, Board of Health Office located in the rear of Town Hall. Second. Motion by Karen Connelly, second by Karen Campfield. All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Well, the commission is trying to be thrilled.
Thank you for the idea.
Yeah, but whenever there's something, everybody is, you know, scurrying in ten different directions to say, you know, what's this, what's that, where it's, where it's.
And they're just home, right?
And now they're, you know, please.
Get a, get a shed with a window.
Yeah, so.
It's hard to see, but it's, it's not sunny.
But we, we, we would want it on the side, probably on the phone. So that we have more, more.
Sure.
For things. Thank you.
Sounds good. Ever gone. Thank you.
It's great, thank you.
Have a good night, Siski.
I will. I'm still waiting to get warm.
I know.
It's probably getting a little hot.
One of these days, maybe by July, you'll get warmed.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Alright, next on our agenda is to discuss about the allocation of Paul Brothers Funds for a water super study, um, that the regional N W R A Water Study, um, is not requested, but that we wanted to. Jim, did you want to?
Yeah, real quick, I mean, I'm sure everybody's aware that the town of Waymouth, as we're looking through a water source for years, including Southfield, they're ahead of us in this process, but they are looking to break N W R A water to Waymouth. Uh, Hingham is part of that. N W R A has let up some of the requirements for buying. For a period of time, it should be very expensive to buy, and they are looking to expand. Uh, so Hingham was put together in a project, uh, that would include Hingham, Cohasset, Rockland, Abington, Moa, and over in Centwood, with the possibility of expanding that use of water. For us, it would be an emergency connection. We wouldn't do it to replace our current water, but it would be an emergency connection. Many of the communities are using their opera funds. Our opera funds are all already designated for the water treatment plant. I don't wanna be the only town to not be part of this study. I think it's one for us to look at. So we did get two hundred thousand dollars, told us as part of that project, we used it up for wastewater and water capacity studies. I think this would be perfect. We've used sixty-six thousand that are ready for the water study that kept it a couple of years ago. So we'll take this as a payout portion of that, get the results, try to take a couple of years to get them, and see what it would cost uh, to try to extend the endeavor and follow down the social just.
Where would that come from?
That'd be part of the study. Waymouth has three, I think, three different options that they're looking at.
Right, one of the things they were saying, to accommodate the south shore, and then we have to go all the way back to make a plane and run a loop forty inch pipe all the way, in that case, it's, it'd be, it'd be very expensive. So they're, they're looking at all the options. They cut off, include that water.
I mean, it's looking to bring it to Quincy, bring it to Braintree, they have a couple of different options, but it's not great. That's the stage that they're, where the pipe will come from, that one comes.
And, um, before I turn over the board, just for clarification, we got two toll brother allocations, two hundred thousand for one project and four hundred thousand for another, so this doesn't impact the renovation.
Well, so it's have a pot.
Right, okay. So I know there are a lot of, you, I should say. Yes, pot of old.
A lot of people want that.
Everybody wants that. So, questions for Jim or Kevin? Susan?
Well, my question, there's another thing for the guy on the table for more allocating, so. For the same pot of money.
Same pot of money.
It's different project.
Correct.
Okay. I didn't have questions besides that, okay.
No, I mean, yeah, I think you have to look at the options, you have money, over there, it's, it's there, it's not locally. So.
That's eight thousand dollars.
Right, it'd be perfect, it's an emergency case. Uh, yeah.
Karen? Campfield?
Thank you. Um, just a couple of background questions. So years ago, this was a, a thought. And at the time, it was determined it was just not gonna happen for us to stand alone, to try to do that. Too expensive, too many towns to go through all that. For us to, I mean, we won't know until the study, but if uh, we're using this solely as a backup measure potentially, um, is really what we're being asked is to defray the costs of the, we have, yeah, for water?
No, Waymouth's getting there, it doesn't matter what happens with this. Waymouth's ahead of us, they're one of the priorities. Both the M W R A and the state, because they, they can't really fully develop the invasion of our water, so this is one of their top priorities. And the M W R A has recently said they are amenable to expanding their district. I know they wanna go north. North Shore has real problems with the South River, almost goes dry in the summertime, so, um, there's a lot of different environmental reasons they wanna do this. Yeah, we could run a pipe from Quincy, Braintree, Waymouth to Centwood, expect it to be you know, worth our money, because it just wouldn't be, it wouldn't be economic. Uh, one of the questions would be how you would do it, right? Would you build a pipe? Uh, we talked about wheeling the water, which talking to Kevin, and that would be a great idea, because then you'd mix too many different water systems, too many different chemicals. That's kind of all the stuff that we talked about, would it come Waymouth, Hingham, Cohasset, Centwood, would it come Waymouth, Rocket Avenue, Moa, Centwood? We don't know, that's all something we're gonna talk about. It could in the end just be like, it's way too expensive to look at.
So, this eight thousand dollars, no way commits us to any, yeah, or?
Just commits us to doing the study.
What's awesome.
Yep. What it'll look like, what it might cost, what directions it would come, if it comes through Abington, it's not cost as much, if it came through Hingham, it's not cost as much. And then we would sit and say, okay, about.
Right, right.
Yeah, well, I do wanna point out that at one point, we were having a trial, and we were in negotiations with Cohasset to help us out, in the event we needed. So, I'm not, I, I'm somewhat persuaded that if we're to get involved in the study, might give us some sense that if something drastic happens down here, that we could call on our neighbors to, to help. So, I, I think it's a small mon, money to invest in the possibility.
Good.
Yeah. Yeah, it'd be interesting to see what kind of, how much water they actually have to send this way. Seems like a lot of additional towns to potentially augment.
I mean, they, they have quite a bit of water, speaking of Waymouth, that would be allocated, uh, in this direction. I personally believe, I think that North Shore is more of a priority, given the environmental fact that they're having on the East Shore River, and that whole watershed, I mean, they're literally, the river goes dry sometimes uh, in the summertime. You know, from personal experience in Linfield, half the town's on wells, half the town's on N W R A. It's really like when Darby opens the door and allows everything, goes from burnt to full color, right across the street from the water use, so. I think that's where they're gonna go first, but, uh, Waymouth is in line, Waymouth is going to at some point make that connection, so I think we need to kind of follow behind them and see what looks up.
Yeah, totally agree. Right, any, uh, comments from the audience? Have anything additional?
Now, we, and we also wanna get in, visit the state or, I don't know, decide to go out on a project, if it's gonna be, you know, and what it's for, you know, so.
Alright, motion?
Move to allocate eight thousand dollars from the Paul Brothers Funds for water source that is the regional N W R A Water Study.
Motion by Andrew Lickridge, second by Karen Connelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. That's our annual sludge cake discussion. Love this. I would agree.
Favorite time of the year.
Favorite time of the year, so. Kevin, Bill, I guess Bill will have coming, if you can hit on behalf of.
I told Will, I think I can handle it.
You can handle it, son.
Well, I'm familiar enough with sludge cake, that we won't need any in-depth, um.
Feel free to give Bill the night off.
In-depth, well, so.
Take it away.
No, we, we have, uh, we have three contracts tonight. The first one is sludge cake. We went out for a public bid on it. Um, we did receive one bidder, um, it's the same company, doing it over and over again, and I believe they're willing to go to the end of the year for the contract. They'll go till the end of the year, the market's been really problematic, um. So, that's about the best we could do at this time for the sludge cake.
Do we have a risk of there not being anybody to take this cake?
Well, we just, it, it goes up further and further, is, is the problem, um.
Monopoly on this.
You know, and, I mean, it's, it's all in moving, I think it could be shifts further and further out, this is the problem for this little bit of process. So, we're looking at different options of, um, maybe taking more water out of it. It's very cost prohibitive to, to dry it, but in the future, it might be something that we do, um, add a add something to the plant, so we can dry the sludge cake, lower the water content, and make it cheaper, but we're not dating yet, because it's an expensive fix, uh, to, to dry the sludge.
Maybe considering extending it out to the end of fiscal, fiscal year twenty?
No, till the calendar year.
Till the calendar year.
That's what the contractor had said, he can guarantee the price probably didn't go.
For this particular?
That's because, um, he believes it's gonna fluctuate at the, uh, landfill.
And that covers our, the summer population, so. With that, well, questions?
No, the only, I know this, this may not be the, the right avenue, but I, I did wanna mention that, uh, Susan and I went to, uh, put a tally commissioners, even Marshfield, and two of the things they talked about, one was to find four other towns on anything, any sort of product that you're seeing prices really go high on, uh, get those four together, they, they might be able to help with some other bidding uh, as well, but, and also if there's only one or, only one, and you're only getting one bid every single time, uh, they might be gonna ask, hey, you can get a three or four of the towns, I might be able to pay, which might be a bigger client, so again, it may not be for this, I just mentioned it, this is the meeting just last week, and just started talking about that, and everyone possibly save some money, so, um, we are where we are, but I, we were missed if it had been mentioned.
No, great point, and, and we do reach out to other towns, um, we have a highway association, from the county highway association, the water association. And we do the same thing with water in sewer for the chemical bids, we'll be coming water popping, so we are, we're involved. You know, we meet monthly and discuss issues like this. The problem is, not every plant's the same, and they don't have the same soil characteristics or sludge characteristics to, to dispose of, um, because it depends on what's inside of it, if it's heavy metals or, or anything else, and that messes with us. So what we typically do is, would have to do a sample study, so that we find out what's in our sludge, and then figure out where it can go. So, it, it can be a little bit, yeah.
Any questions, uh? Two of you?
No.
You're? Okay. Uh, we have a motion for this particular initiative.
Move that the select board vote to approve the lineback South Shore disposal, the disposal of sludge cake for two hundred and five dollars per ton.
Motion by Karen Connelly, second by Andrew Lickridge. All in favor? Uh, aye. Alright, so I have next, uh, swarmy, phase five.
Yep, so we're doing another water phase, um, and last year, we called, we were, uh, put off because the gas company was doing work on Jericho Road, and we held off on our project, so now our project, we did bid it, um, we had six bidders, uh, a little bidder was Selco. Selco's done work on town in the past, we've had good luck, uh, with them, so this is the project we're looking to do. It's, um, Longley Road, Ermine Road, and Jericho Road, um, we get enough funds to do a couple extra roads on top of that, with pre-design. Um, replace mold AC pipe, and that's what we're. Replace mold AC pipe and that's what we're going for.
No.
No.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Before the gas company delayed us, did this go out to bid?
No.
Okay, so we have no sort of references to whether or not this, I'm sure it did cost us more than it would have twelve months ago. May I have that?
Actually, actually twelve months ago, um, the pipe, the materials themselves were about fifteen percent higher. Because it was still recovering COVID, so the prices actually gone down a little bit in the, in the materials, probably not the labor costs. So it's probably a balance. Now, oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Just one more observation. Um, this is the company that we have worked well with, not the company that did three A.
And I, I have to say, the gas company reached out to me and asked, they said, we only did part of Jericho, but we do the rest of Jericho this year. And I said, that's not what you would talk to the blackboard when we spoke about this. So they're saying, well, we think we might have to replace our pipe all the way down Jericho. We might wanna sneak it in beforehand. And I, I said, I've already got a bid. You know, these guys are getting ready to start, so. Stay tuned for that.
Can we go side by side?
No, because it's, it's gas. It's, it's a different type of pipe that has to go in. They might have to weld it up if it's steel or plastic. It's, it's a different method. And, um, you know, we bid this with our contractor and didn't have any work with the gas company coordination, so it's kind of tricky. But this doesn't include all depth paving on, uh, the three streets that we found out of this job, so. We'll, we'll see. I don't want to void our warranty on, on the paving also with the gas company. So, um, the gas company's doing a small project now on Merton Lane and we're trying to get that all worked out. And see how that goes. So we'll see, see. They just booked on, I believe, that that's the dating. So we're, we're trying to work with them, but they're different.
I'd just like to see that be guaranteed line, so.
Well, if you remember, they said they'd be done in, how, how quickly were they gonna be done? And then they sang it up and they said, we're also gonna jump out on one twenty-three. We're gonna do this, we're gonna do that.
They have a neighborhood on one thirty-three all up in arms or not understanding and then they just sort of walk away. They still haven't done one, right?
No, and then we had the same problem on Invin. We worked out a deal that we were gonna do that. They're gonna help out with the paving and some other stuff and nothing's happened. So they, they are frustrating at times.
Karen, I'm sorry, I just, but you said what type of pipes, pipe are being moved this summer? What's the treatment? Are they, you said the type of pipe?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's, it's a transite pipe. It's an AC pipe. Um, and, um, if you look in the back page of what we did, we put the dates in. Jericho Road was put in in nineteen forty-one. Ermine was fifty-three and Longley was fifty-six. So, um, in their, their known areas where we've got some breakage and some, and some problems with that pipe, Jericho broke. At least twice in the past year. I know that. We've got a break on Ermine with that. Issues on Longley. So hopefully with that also, by the way.
Okay. Any additional?
No.
Okay, Karen, if I want to answer your question. Having scheduled a spring flushing yet? Is that?
Yep, it's on our, it's on our radar. Um, believe it or not, we're actually upstanding the other day. So we were hoping to have, um, we don't want to flush and then cause ice blocks. So we're key, I mean, we've been, just bringing it up in this update, that we're, we're planning on flushing soon. We haven't committed to it because the letter hasn't been cooperating. It, it's been cooperating, but it just hasn't. Yeah, so once we start up, it's kind of a pull. You, you keep going with it. So, um, we are set up to allocate people for the flushing and see how much we can accomplish.
Any additional questions for Kevin? Anybody else? Nope. Uh, motion? Anyone? Move that the select board vote on chapter case five A of the Water Mandering for the Patient Project to self-boat construction cooperation in Tenville, Matt. For one million nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand one hundred and seventy-sixteen fifty-five cent. Motion by Karen Canfield, second by Andrew Goodrich, all in favor? Aye. All right, and we have. Another request for use of the toll board, right?
Yes, so there is a, there's an unfunded mandate through the EEP for the water department. And one of the requirements is to put everything together regarding water services to everybody's individual house. And what the EEP is looking for is trying to make sure that we have no lead pipes still in our system. Um, we don't believe we do, but this is part of the collection system that we need to submit to the EEP. So, um, there's gonna be a lot of public outreach. Our people are trying to do it internally. And we had people from the sewer department helping out the water department and we just weren't getting any address. So, um, we discussed it and, you know, with Auntie's help, we decided we would go out and find a company that does this. We reached out to not Funton County, but Mass Water Resources, Mass Water, um. Association that we're members of and brought it up in one of the meetings and they said, a couple of different towns have been having good luck with this company here. So we piggybacked off that, got a quote to do the work and hopefully we can bump the speed. I believe it's due in twenty twenty-seven. It's gonna take a while for us to get up the compliance, but we do want to move the compliance course.
So is this just to identify where it needs to be replaced?
Eric gave me a breakdown too. There's just, it's data on everybody's services. And it's to complete all, all the reports as well as do public outreach. Um, they're gonna be setting something up with QR codes so that people can identify where their services are and have an inventory. And we can figure out who has what for what lines. It'd be better. We've got a lot of individual pads for everybody's house. I have a pad and I can tell them where the service is. This is gonna put everything all together. So we have database that we can pull that all up easier as well as meet the, um, standard criteria that the EEP requires for us to have. They're, they're making everybody have the same setup.
So it says in here there's a twenty-one thousand dollar reoccurring subscription fee. So how many years can we anticipate subscribing and just, are we coming back every year on that? Or is that coming out of toll, this toll brother fund as well?
It's in the operational budget. So eventually it'll be in the operational budget once the database is supplied.
Okay.
And it's, it's more than just identifying every service. There's a lot of other aspects to it.
Yep, so if they're gonna be identifying, when you say service line, I assume that is the homeowner's.
Correct. Well, half of it, half of it's the homeowner's, half of it is ours.
Okay, so where I'm trying to get to is, so if you identify something that is bad and. Is the homeowner going to be notified and told that you have to? Are we gonna unearth a lot of problems here?
Well. Even if we didn't want to, we, we have to. The state's requiring us to. But for example, we went into a lead line anywhere in the town, especially around the water projects. We would reach out to the residents and we would replace it all the way to the property edge, you know, all the way through. Because we want to get rid of all the lead lines.
But if, if, the, if the service line is led as well, the homeowner is.
The homeowner would, would be required and responsible to do that, but also.
And right now, we're only doing that when there is, I understand, either new building or transfer. I mean, we're not out there all the time looking for these problems, right? I'm just asking that.
No, we're not looking for it. When we're doing a water project, it's something we do look for. If we do run into that service, we, we replace it. And sometimes we'll just replace it all the way.
So I, I think where I'm gonna go on this is I think there needs to be a really pretty good public education campaign done. So that people can understand it. And I'm pretty sure that ninety-nine percent of people, if they were, if it was discovered that they have a lead. That they're responsible for leading into their house, they want to know it and fix it. Don't want to splatter their water.
And that's part of what, what this company does, if they set it up. And yes, we do, you know, pointing to our people, we believe we've eliminated most of them already. We don't have any lead, but we're still.
But it's always a, you know, how people are. They're, they're gonna find something and then what?
Yes, no, I, no doubt, we might, you know, we might find something that we don't like. We found galvanized lines. You know, we've, we've found some crazy things.
Yeah. Yeah, but I, I think what Karen's just trying to say is just let people know the potential outcomes of this. So it's not a industry, right? It's understand the outcomes, the value.
Oh, no, no.
Happy numbers where about, where that one.
Got it. That's a switch. Good point. Okay, kind of all that data won't fall, letting the folks know is right, because most people will do it.
No, and, and we're required to act on them. If we do find any, we're gonna be acting on. If there remain. One of the other things I believe Eric has set up is if meter meters and houses can also look into lead services. If they see anything, so they can just make people aware or even make us aware.
Right. I do have a couple of questions. The, first of all, what, what database? What is it? A database? A list or would there be some sort of map? Did you get a screenshot of it?
I don't have it. Eric's been working on it with the company and I haven't, I haven't been in the meeting. I wasn't in meetings. So I know it's a database. I thought it was, I didn't think it was a map. I think it was more of a database. You could look up any address and set up quickly and find out where everything is on it.
Then the other question I had was the classifications, one's lead, one's galvanized requirement replacement, one's non-led. Non-led and one's lead status unknown. How does lead status unknown encompass?
So that's for a service that we have no records on.
Oh, okay. That's not a classification.
No, it's, we don't know.
That was a classification.
No, we don't, we don't know what it is. It'll probably need more inspection in the future.
I'm not, that's, that's common there. Okay.
So it's, it's not anything in particular.
But they're gonna develop a publicly available service line in for a guy who leaves material classifications and one of the classifications is lead status. I just thought that. What would we do if we had a list of lead status unknown?
Well, we're not gonna dig somebody's yada to look at this service. I don't think they want us to dig yada to say, oh, this is plastic or this is copper. You know, it's just, we don't know what it is this time.
And that would be because of the age of the house or something, or?
It, it could be the aged house. It could have been the building that was turned into ass builds and said we used when they built the house. It could be, could be a bunch of different things. But we're not gonna go out into the street and dig up the main, find out what the service is. You know, but if we are in the area and we're doing something, then we might be able to track down the services. But there are those instances that you don't, you don't know what it is.
Thanks. Is it? Any more discussion on the subject? Yes, so this is not inspection and modelized. This is simply taking existing records.
Taking the data we have, everything else, putting it in, setting a database up. There's also, there's also a PR process. Um, we're gonna do QR codes so that people could scan them. It's, it's a lot of information.
And this is exactly what our, this is what time that goes. Wherever is building systems like this, which I would imagine that with a sister department quite a bit too, to be able to just put something and say.
Right now, we've got file cabinet. Somebody calls up, they look through and they pull them out and they pull up the old ass build and probably take a picture and send it up to the guy in field.
They want. And though, moving to this, this is something that.
And it's, oh, yeah, all of this. The DEPs require everybody to update also and get, get a little.
That's a good idea. It has, it will reduce our funds to this particular product. Resources to, I think, maybe four thousand-ish. See what, that's right. I'd be proud of. Any else? No, good for a motion, Karen Canfield? No, but you have any other questions? Oh, I do not. No, okay.
Move to allocate thirty-three thousand seven hundred twenty-dollar from the toll booth response for water and sewer service. Water contract to one ton of water to enough of the service home inventory. Service by inventory provide to provide a database of services and action plan and more compliance.
Motion by Andrew Goodrich, second by Karen Canfield, all in favor?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Good night. You're not flipping around for anything else? That's it. All righty. So we will move on to a presentation and update, not go back. To be fast with regards to the Situate. Pennis Porx, how are you?
Good, how are you?
She did kill the ones who joined them.
Give you the project.
Yeah, they started this bit.
How is it going?
It's going well.
Are we gonna do a PowerPoint here?
I do.
Okay. Seth, do you have it or?
I got it.
We got it.
So thank you for squeezing this schedule. Um, just wanted to give you a quick, uh, update on things as we head into county. Looking for, for the ones who can see funding. Real quick, agenda, you already heard our, um, previous study. Um, we explained what we're trying to do. We won't spend too much time on that. Want to talk more about our schedule now, our final design plans, uh, which are pretty close to being done. Uh, and then some of the project elements, uh, uh, that have been quarterly again. So you're all aware of previous design, why we're doing it. Site analysis that we originally prepared for the project, you know, squeezed in between the, the track that we recently redid. And, uh, in my, I think that was recently redone as well. So very tight construction site. Uh, so construction logistics and communication between school, the town and the contractor is going to be imperative. Should the project funding be approved and construction starts, uh, on July fourth. This is the original conceptual design that was prepared as part of the study and community outreach, uh, that we did. So again, going from four to five ports so that we can hold a high school tennis match. Three singles matches and two doubles matches at the same time. Everybody at the school is, uh, really looking forward to the possibility of playing on this next spring. Currently, uh, we're right here, March twenty-sixth, presenting to you guys. Last week, we had a community meeting down at, in the library. Uh, it was.
Was it all?
I think we had three people. So. The rec department, Nicholas Meyer, posted on the Facebook page, sent it out to the beach jar, I believe it was, um, also put on our website. And the school also put it on some of the social media pages. You know, some good questions came out of it, uh, but really it was, people all in favor of it. I think that's what's the primary indicator. It's not a hot button topic, uh, which feels nice. I think it's seen as a media right now. Um, so. From here, we're gonna have a final, um, project design meeting, uh, Thursday morning this week with project group, which is members of rec. The two athletic tractors on the high school. Jamie will join us, uh, if he's a general. Uh, and then Thursday night, we're going to plan for our stormwater permit application. So that's been submitted. We had, it's been peer reviewed. Uh, we're submitting our response to the peer reviewers all very. Nothing extraordinary in their review comments. Um, so it looks like hopefully that will be moving forward. Uh, and then obviously town meeting coming. Uh, right now, uh, we're planning on a hundred percent construction documents. April eleventh, so issued publicly on people. We've had the project estimated by an outside estimator. So we're working on a few things with how we're in structure of the contract. Right now, because of the volatility in the market and some unforeseen that we hit, um, one, we were doing geotechnical investigations. Electrical survey and also we got real on-the-ground topographic survey. Costs are slightly elevated over what we, uh, were previously planning. So, you know, hopefully we just submitted the bids. We do know, uh, that there are several contractors out there that are very interested, uh, that one of them being the contractor did the field project and the ring. So that was good. Uh, so that was good to hear.
Can you mind us what, uh, you submitted and where you were, give us a little bit more detail where you're seeing it coming?
Sure, uh, so I believe we were, uh, approved by CVC for one point nine five seven change. That's right, okay. Uh, and the estimate came in approximately two points. Uh, so, you know, about three hundred thousand over where we wanted to be, um, also.
What's driving a lot of that for?
So. I just switched to the next.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. Um, so this is the new site. Um, and some of the things that are driving that is number one, artwork. Um, so when we did the study, uh, we didn't have true topographic survey at the time, we're using GRS, which, you know, has its benefits and also its challenges. So we weren't able to do a true analysis. Um, at that time, we were planning on about fifteen hundred yards of export. Uh, and now where we are, we're looking at about three thousand. So the cereal export has doubled. Um, the price of concrete has gone up significantly, so being post-mentioned concrete courts, uh, that has, uh, created a bit of a challenge. And then finally. This plan, um, so you see the three colored circles here. Um, those are all power sources. So with this being a lit tennis court facility, we were originally anticipating coming out of concessions. Uh, that was built as part of a track deal or the fields. Uh, there's a panel in there, the electrical engineer came out and determined that it's just not large enough, the surface just isn't. Um, it's close, but not, uh, for her to feel comfortable and say that, hey, listen, if you have a football game and you got a coffee machine going, you got a hot dog maker going. Uh, right, it's not gonna be able to support a light so rare at the tennis court. So the second thing we did was we went up to the cabinet in the right field of baseball, checked that out. There's possibility there, uh, but we would have to replace a transformer inside of that cabinet, put in an all-new breaker, and then pull new feeders or electrical wires all the way back to the concession stand through the east. Conduit's large enough until you get to just outside concession stand, where next down from a four-inch conduit, it was one inch. So we'd have to dig up a whole area to get back into the concession stand, put it in cabinet there. Ultimately, what was decided is most cost-effective approach is to come out of the utility room and the middle school. Um, go across the drive and then just to the southeast corner of the field will have a cabinet that will house all the. Uh, so the electrical service is, is one of the bigger nuts. Um, so what we're doing, what we're proposing to do as a project to, the way that we're structuring these documents. Is base bid will be tennis courts and everything you see here. With the exception of both fixtures and feeds. That will be alternate number one. Uh, so if funding allows, when it's coming, we'll take alternate number one right away, uh, and go back to what we had originally talked about. If it's not enough, um, we've had conversations with CPC, uh, here in federal and state, uh, about, uh, different options. Talked about puddle earlier with the Toll Brothers as well for the recreation reasons, we talked to recreation about that. Um, but really, it's too early, you know, we're, we're just kind of speculating.
So it needs three alternates to those, your estimate equals six hundred thousand deficit?
It's roughly three hundred thousand deficit, uh, but yeah.
My hat is real, one point six million, two point two million?
One point.
Nine, oh, one point nine, okay, I can take that better. Thank you.
So. That's the first alternate, the second alternate would be, uh, the storage units over here. Um, same storage unit, said we have up at the fields project, they have hours, so there's absolutely costs associated with that. Um, the third alternate would be the two, uh, three-row bleacher units. Doesn't seem like a lot of money, but they're actually twelve thousand five hundred dollars. So that's, that's usually twenty-five thousand, I hope it changes. And then the fourth alternate, a relatively small item, but, um, in the end turns out to be about ten thousand dollars, is a trash recycling receptacle for about ten grand, uh, so you could say. So that's the way we're structuring the alternatives right now, lights, storage units, bleachers, and then, um, the trash recycling receptacle.
Do they play out there today at night?
They don't have lights with them.
Lights, okay.
They have lights over at recreation, uh, where the five courts are, um, but no lights with them. And the general thought is that lights are pretty important, because especially during this time of year, high school will be using them for the majority of the daylight hours for practices and competitions. And then really, let home看电视, it's one of the deals. Um, so if all else fails, um, and, you know, we can only afford a base bid. Um, we did have a conversation with Dan Fenland and Scott about, hey, listen, we're gonna be going around the door again for a special time, we can fall, uh, to get the funding to, to put up, so.
I'll have a few last questions.
Could I just say, look, the ports as they are now are really not playable, they're hazardous. So we, we have to move to at least get the base done. The concrete concept really doesn't look the right thing, because it's gonna last fifty years. So we amortize that over, it's, as opposed to replacing the cabinet, it could be what? Fifteen years, twelve, twelve to fifteen years, we don't wanna revisit this again. We wanna be as high quality as the rest of the complex that we already built, I think that's it. I'm not surprised that where the numbers have come up a little bit. I think the, the four options are all considerable, but understandable. So there's a way to get this completed, and then there's a way to add to it if we need to.
Forgot one other item that go across a little bit, uh, storm, uh, dealing with, uh, stormwater solutions, so. Uh, infiltration requirements out there, uh, we did our test bits, certified soil a little bit later. Um, and you see that piece of asphalt coming off the track where the five hole is right now? We did test bits on the side, one side, we hit, uh, seasonal high ground water. Just about eighteen inches, uh, this time of year, I wasn't shocked by that. But I'm like, uh-oh, because we're in an aquifer perfection district. And we briefly separated from the bottom of our infiltration chambers, which go underground. So we needed to find seasonal higher, hopefully. Uh, shockingly, on the other side of that walk line, we found that an eleven feet. Ask me how that happens, I don't know. It sounds like it's perched on the other side, but, uh, the fact that we got it in nice sand soils helped our budget a little bit. But the fact that we have to add some chambers over there and all that kind of stuff, uh, definitely boosted. Um, we are doing some channel drains and some new, um, stormwater enhancements in the area to take care of all the water coming down off the hillside. So, um, that will not only help this site, but also, um, the rain down and the skate park. So that, there was a little extra cost associated with that, that was considered, anticipated. Uh, the retaining walls themselves, um, were, you know, we're gonna have about six-foot-high retaining wall that wraps the entire, um, eastern side here. Uh, and then extends down in between the skate park and the tennis courts. Um, those, those were priced pretty accurately, um, originally. In fact, uh, we were a little heavy on our original estimate for loads, so I was encouraged, uh, pricing for that. Um, this is no longer going to be an elevated seating area, it's gonna be false for the pool, um, just like this seating area over here. Um, and that was also a cost saving method. And I think overall, aesthetics and performance are a little bit better with, um. Intersections and retaining also, we had part of fencing associated with that. We do have a relatively hefty landscape budget. I, I know, um, the original time when we were doing the study that, because we have to take down a number of trees to excavate into the slope. We wanna do the best that we can to revegetate that all the, so, um, that's something that we're not touching right now. Um, we have a combination of deciduous trees, evergreen trees, and then unrestored plants, and, uh, all natives, uh, that will tie that into that, that will look like. Um, give it a nice buffer of protection to the, the lot of the grass.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
When you, and you're sort of based on, you have, the, the other project, meaning the fields that you've already done. With regards to landscaping, you designed this, you contract that out, who plants those trees and who? Who puts all those in, because they're all dead up there.
They'll be planted by the contractor.
Yeah.
So do we have any recourse with them? All the evergreens are dead, all around the, the.
Some of those are.
The complex, so it's another time for topic, but I'm just curious on what our recourse is on that?
Usually there's a warranty for a period of time.
Yeah, so we probably.
Yeah, so warranties, I would guess, uh, a little.
It's a one-year warranty usually, but some of those evergreens are larches. So they're not, they're not actually evergreens, they're deciduous trees that look like an evergreen. So they, they look dead in winter, but in the spring, they start to, so.
Oh, that makes sense.
Um, are you talking about up top, like in between the baseball and softball field? Yeah.
He's gonna be out angry. I, I just, I just.
Now I say that, I'm gonna go out there and just be like a Charlie.
We're talking about landscaping, I'm just curious who, who owned it.
A few of them, we did have them replaced, uh, within the first.
Sorry, such a grand, but.
No, I'm proud. Um, just a, a couple of other little items, um. So a- all along, uh, the face of fencing in between the skate park and the courts will have some windscreen that can be branded. Um, through the working group, we decided that it made sense to be more town-lan than that school. Um, so we're still working on color options with the group, and we don't really have to decide that before it goes up to bed. Construction, but I think it'll provide a real nice backdrop, uh, especially with all over in the stadium, you know, for us to all of us after, across game, what have you. Um, and looking across and have that nice frame.
Is the surface trying to be blue as we see?
So if the surface is blue, if this area, we'll probably go with gray spring. If we switch it, where the courts are blue, the outside is gray, then we'll go with blue.
Can I go back to that town branding, is that the town seal you're putting on that?
That's the town seal, yeah.
Yeah, we buy that one.
Okay, easy.
Questions?
Why, why is that, why would you wanna get rid of that seal?
We can discuss it.
The storages, who, the storage unit, number nine?
Yes.
Where we store, basketballs and dry, dry in the courts?
Yeah, so. Storage always seems to be at a premium.
We just gotta new shed.
You have a shed, I can't.
For test balls. I'm, this is my first job ever, we're gonna be at a tennis place for ten years.
I know that, I know that this is a bit wrong, but we're here, like, one of the biggest fears is that we're going to be a town of sheds. But, you know, that was one of the orig, we only had one originally.
DPW.
And then DPW requested a second one to keep a baller in or, or something.
So it's now a mowers, it's a mowers for tennis courts that are concrete.
No, those are over on the high school field, this would be for the, probably for the tennis game.
What are they, they store that, this is what, ten thousand dollars? Five thousand?
More, more.
A storage unit with electricity.
So maybe, so maybe a period of the storage unit needs to be evaluated.
And that's, that's, uh, alternative alternative. So, I mean.
I was just, yeah, I didn't know if there's some other, like, you know, storing, something for the lights or something like the.
That was something that we looked at. If, if we were coming out of, uh, concession stand, we were gonna use one of the storage units as like that, the electrical panel. Um, but it doesn't make sense to look all the way.
I just, a lot of money is worth, what, a dozen dozens.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know.
Easily?
Yeah.
Value your engineering.
We're gonna have to make decisions. If you're over budget and we have to make decisions.
That's an easy one to do.
I don't, I wouldn't think that.
Yeah, uh, it's a little bit of a whole day.
Right.
And I assume, I assume when we get the biz, you'll want us to come back and.
Well, they'll have to, from one to the other.
Have to afford it, so, yeah.
But I think. Probably wanna put that, put that shed further down because we have to do the alternate one, right?
You do.
So if.
You don't want seating over a shed.
Yeah, there seems to be a, we don't need the shed, it's the last thing you need, maybe put that down.
And lighting.
Maybe like Mars had one of the steel or the, so the bleachers would be have a.
Now, Campfield, you can go first, yeah, that's exactly, so you had, but obviously nobody's gone out to bid yet, or?
No, no, in the streets, uh, April.
Of April eleventh, so there is time to modify, because after.
It is.
Yeah. It's a problem in this, yeah, because they can't have the authority. To Jim's point, it's a, if you do it, you have to do it sequentially, you don't get a pay. So I would agree that the utility of seating, bar seating is a place to store stuff. Um, the other question, I just for clarification, the base bid scope includes running out of conduits for the electricity?
Conduits, um, and violations.
Right, so, let's say you can only do that, you get more money down the road, it just.
And then hang.
Yeah, they have this structure. Will they, will it be hacked the way that the concrete on the board, if you don't do the lights and stuff first and then you jump the structure? And one thing I didn't see in the, in the back of an administic is, if you start July, how long is?
Um, so typically, uh, we're looking at somewhere in, uh, twelve feet, timeframe. Um, you know, this is for, for five minutes, most special. This is a little bit more complicated with the amount of excavation, uh, the tight side, the retaining wall stuff. Um, so we're gonna set up documents so that substantial completion is reached around October, October one. Um, and really the hope is that they can push construction and really get everything done by then. Because the tennis court contractor will not surface the concrete after a date of around October, because of night temperatures and dew on the surface. So if, if it happens where they can't get the surface down, then we're waiting through the winter, hence the next spring when it's warm enough to actually surface, put the propane on the surface. So it wouldn't be usable for high school in the spring or two. So really, especially under, um, at the mercy of Mother Nature.
We'll be doing that probably in the late April, before the month of the year. Yeah, wait for the spring to do those.
And I think courts are okay, it's.
That's fine.
There are five.
So that's, that's where the high school uses that. Um, so worst case, they continue to use that, but I think the overall plan that I heard is that maybe Gates becomes a couple of double employees. Like, that kind of pushes that up that more, you know, um. I mean, but you, you, you think about it, when we did the fields project. We did the field, we got the track surface, we got the bleachers in, and it was ready for Thanksgiving football. So, and track is just as sensitive to temperatures. So if the weather cooperates, then we should do.
We could weather that in.
Yeah.
That's like last year, or, oh, that's.
I did a question about the funding issue, so CBC is recommended at the one point nine five seven.
Correct.
Based on what we're looking at tonight, that's not enough money, but, oh, just.
According to the outside estimator, yes.
Just, so. We can't add to that money fancy at town meeting, you can't raise it. The rarity of the concept. Okay, so what happens if you consider the two point two?
On the base.
Do you identify enough cuts to be able to do the project and then go back to CBC or to town meeting or whatever reason? Um, you know, I'm. Or whatever reason, um you know, I'm not saying C P C, not with the, they're the most logical, but I said. And the good news is, I think that meeting is usually around Novemberish.
Yes, man, if, if the base bid exceeds available funds that we might have, if you wanna throw in some money for that. Then you have to reject all the bids.
We could.
Get more money and rebid because the bids will all be there for a certain time.
Or rebid it, re-vision it.
Kind of, kind of back off, take out the light.
Yeah.
Uh if you have enough money to do just the base bid, uh maybe you need to add some of the gas to that. Then you will work the base bid, you build it, and then you come back in the fall, save any money for X Y Z.
Right.
Then you go back and add those in the spring.
Right.
But theoretically, as Mark said, the tennis courts, they can go out and play on the tennis courts.
Right.
Before we put the lights in, before we did the rest of the stuff.
Because that's the reason to do this, frankly, is to get the tennis courts in.
Absolutely.
Good shape for the high school, tennis meeting, everything else is an added benefit. And so I would just hate to see this not proceed forward because we can't figure out a way to get to.
One of the, the, there's, there's different schools of thought, right, where they wanna appropriate the money first and then do the bids, or whether do the bids because. The contractors will know how much money we have.
Right, right.
So if they're really hungry, they wanna get the job done, they're gonna look at and say, I gotta commit under this number to get it done.
Is it a competitive, is it a project that these contractors wanna do, like is it?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not, it's not a huge project, but it's, but it's a nice project, it's nicely built though.
It's gonna take a full construction season, so like, don't worry about coming back and backing out and then move on to the next one.
Well, you have to stay.
I've already had contractors home and say, you know, what's scheduled for this because they know of it.
Yeah.
And their interest, so that's, that's a good.
So I think too, I mean, the board everybody in this room as well, where Tom Robert Klein sent her out there. You know, what's the best course of action moving forward to evaluate, putting that up for discussion for after town meeting? Is it better to avoid, had that discussion before town meeting or?
I think we were under the. We, we talked about it, and then I think the, the direction that was ultimately decided, let's wait till after time, let's get the bids in. See where we're at, and then we have another big discussion.
See what I'm seeing, yeah.
You'll have time after the bids come in to have a meeting if you're, you're more than a thousand dollar short.
Yeah.
We'll be trying to have a meeting before you have to actually order the bid.
We got thirty days.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, it's great, leave alone.
Yeah, I hope so, I wish, you know, I thought we were being offered conservative with the study prices.
But I think you heard everybody kind of, you know, change the order of the alternates.
I did, yes, so we're going lights, then we're going bleachers, then we're going trash, and then we're going storage. It's settled.
Sounds good.
Awesome.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for any money. If somebody.
You are.
If you can.
Chris Mason?
I'm ready.
Hi, Chris, how are you?
Hello, how are you?
Great, get to talk about more bike racks.
Bike racks. These bike rack comes with a shed.
We always like comedians. Alright, so I know you guys were before us um quite a few months ago about these bicycle racks, I think.
I don't even.
We asked for you to kind of go back and you probably DPW understand location, right, sounds like you've done that.
Yeah, so we've spoken to rec, we've spoken to DPW, um we've also kind of changed the, the style of the racks.
Okay.
So, I mean, we, you know, we're about half price on the ask here versus what the initial one was. So we pivoted to a different style of rack, so these are called the grid style racks.
Yep.
Um they're portable, but you can also mount these. Uh so what we're looking at doing is putting, pivoting to these, um you would, they'd be powder coated in, in blue. Kind of like situat blue.
Yeah.
Uh would be the thought, um they'd be positioned at, so two in Hamar Rock. Uh two in Peggy, mine it, we're planning on two, but we're still pending with DPW because they, they have that project going on. So we know we've got two spots we can use, but right now we're kind of DVDing on that. Um and then also two in Egypt, so each rack is, with shipping and the racks themselves. It's a total of ten thousand eight hundred fifty six, install is still approximate, we're, I'm looking at about five hundred per beach. And all this is putting them together and either placing them there or putting them into the ground. It's not a complicated feature.
Security end.
Yeah, we are, so um we're securing them at, uh we would secure them at mine it. Uh Egypt would actually be on a path, and I've got some pictures, there's a path kind of on the grass inside, right there, so this is the path that goes to the left.
Yep.
And we could place them right on the grass on the side there. So we would secure these, these are heavy though, so we also mentioned you got some heavy ones, about two hundred and twelve pounds each. So they're not going anywhere. Um so two, two on Egypt, which you go to the next slide for them. Two here at Peggy, we would secure these, so this is the area that as you pull into Peggy, right on the right side there, that had this open stretch. You know, it was, we, we looked all over the place and ultimately, no one wanted to give it a parking spot for a bike rack. So um this is kind of where we settled on Peggy, and, and it's out of the way, but at the same time, it also is very visible. So when you pull in, you can see, oh, hey, I have bike racks here, so I can think about that next up there. And it stays away from when the lifeguards park and kind of that other area.
Is there enough clearance there, like did the highway department or the police make sure there's not layers on that empty way to have the bike racks there?
We have not spoken to them about that, just DPW. It's.
Does, does fire, anybody need to look at that? I know it's wide going in there, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think it'd be a parking, it's shut the lock, it's a big shot.
Did you see that white line on the left slide? That's the first parking spot for out of towners. So it kind of butt up, I guess, I seen, so you're already, you're pulling, and you're always kind of, you're already pulling away from that.
Gotcha.
So, um.
Thank you, Seth, for your, your pointing, yeah.
Um so that would be Peggy, and then if you move to the next slide. Imagine that's a straight box right there, this is um Hamar Rock, and this would be on the left side there, it can be on either side, but. I put it on the left side, there's a, there's a very long stretch there, and put two racks. And they're out of the way, they're barrier, but you know, you can pick your bike racks to beach. Um and then the next one is just mine it, and this is kind of, we were initially looking at this area here. But I know there's also some parking lot work going on, so we're thinking there's probably two bike racks, maybe one on this side of mine it, and one on the other side of mine it. So, we're requesting the racks, we just don't have a specific location.
Are you, are you talking about the, on the gravel place, the area, not on the sidewalk?
On the gravel, because initially the, we were looking at, when I kind of took this over, they were looking at on the both sides of the parking lot there on the right.
Yeah.
And there's just not enough room, the two handicap spots, it's not good. Um so we were looking at actually up top there.
That's spot number, yeah, I just.
That's about the only place there.
I only mention that because that piece of concrete, a lot of people put their chairs there.
Oh.
At high tide.
Oh, yes.
They would not be really pleased.
Yeah, no, it would be essentially where that plant terrace.
Yeah, okay, and maybe one down at the other.
Yeah, one on the other, I mean, either at the parking lot or, you know, I'm hoping it would be at the parking lot, because I can't find another spot on that side. We looked at the ramp at one point, it was DPW suggested the ramp, but then when I looked at it, the ramp would have water all the way to the top lip, and it's on hang ones. There's not enough room in there anyway, so.
So you recommend you're gonna take out that?
Yes.
That pot?
Yeah.
Have you?
We, well, we can put it.
Have we, wait, have you, have you talked to the, you have like a whole other market beach association? I'm sorry, you're, you're not talking to any pot, you're making front of it?
Well, we can put it in front of it, either way, I mean, that was kind of the area we're looking at, the, the pops issue, then we.
That's my point, I don't think you can unless you talk to the city.
Oh, I, yeah, I don't think that they would.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I heard, I thought I could just say, that's why you need to talk, yeah, yeah.
The other option is, but we would have to have someone pick them up every, every year is on the other side of the, kind of where the barrier is right now. There's a lot of room there, people usually put their bikes there anyway, putting one there, but no one's committing to move these on a yearly basis, so these are all gonna stay put. So if we could do that, we could put one there, but a lot of this stuff, there's a, it's not the direction. And then on sand hills, we just can't find a spot.
Even the parking lot here?
There, yeah, so there's, it's either, it would be taking a part of space, or it would be underneath that telephone pole and the, one of the angle, and I suggest it. On the actual walk in, on the sandy area, that was a no as well, so we've gone around and around on that one, we just can't find a spot. So.
I heard your question, that was my question, yeah, I would think it's kind of.
I know.
A little bit.
It's down the river, but.
There are a lot of bikers in that area, kids.
I think that lot is ever full, ever.
I don't, I was just gonna say, who wants that lot, do you?
I'll just say hills.
Yeah, it's, it's still on.
It requires a beach and a pot.
Oh, I always thought it was like part of the general stores still.
Yeah, it's, I mean, there's.
It is not the most tidy used parking lot, beach lot on the town, so yeah.
That would be, I mean, that would be the best spot because it takes a spot or two, but.
Are there any spots right down there?
Yeah, there's, there's, I mean, there's probably, how much, ten, maybe three rows of ten.
Okay, we take one car spot, or do we feel like that would be?
I'll take a get it.
Yeah.
I haven't looked down for a bike rack, so I have to go take a get it, see how much is locked up.
Okay.
It might be spot, it's a little nice, it's a good touch, don't mind it. Last year. We do have a little body there in the back, the racks are a parking spot just in the back, you know, I'll, I'll have to go take a look at it, just don't remember off the top of my head.
Yeah, towards the bottom, I'm grabbing it, or the, it's kind of deep up, so it has to be up a little higher, or, or there's room, it's, you can, you know, get a little spots.
And remind me, this is coming out of the beach revolving fund, Nancy?
I, I'm assuming that's where it's coming from.
So this is, no, this is a CPC request, so it, it didn't make the upcoming CPC, the, the current CPC was sent. Yeah, yeah, no, it was sent in September, but it was missed, so it's not gonna hit until now May.
Oh.
For a CPC request.
So we won't even see these till summer of twenty twenty five?
Yeah.
I think you'll get some pushback from CPC, only because if there is a beach revolving fund, and this is a beach improvement. Um so just be prepared for that.
Okay.
They may ask you.
I was making a.
Call the Nancy.
Yes.
So. If, if we were to, if funds were to be allocated for beach revolving, we'd still be in town meeting, but now we could allocate.
Have a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you would be required to have these bike racks if you do CPC routes, non-muable.
Yep.
So, although, but you know, you can't find someone to take them in and out.
Yeah.
So the minute they're taking them out, they're not gonna give you.
Yes, yes, I was told that.
Yeah.
Which is fine, no one's seen it in there.
Everyone's got their roles and regulations and. Well, so let me ask that question then, if. Maybe you have an opinion from CPC, whether it's something that they didn't even consider, because do we read the whole year? If it could come out with beach revolving fund, if that doesn't require town meeting, or it only requires a board vote, or, I know we're, we're looking at lifeguard salaries there.
Yeah, the, the big, the, the big problem with the beach revolving is mine it, parking lot. How much of that is it right?
Oh, still.
I don't think a fifteen thousand dollar price for a rack is gonna break the beach revolving fund. We just have to, just has to go through procurement, meaning we just have to make sure that we're good out of bid. Or you stick on track.
It's not waiting an entire year, if it's, if it makes sense.
Yeah.
I agree, yeah. I think that the current model, there's, you know, it's, we can't find a second price for the mine it, you know, it gets allocated to sand hills. We would do the full amount anyway, um I think you're right, that's challenging.
Yes.
It's needed, but it's. Um you know, if it turns out that we run into the parking lot, we can create an opportunity that, because it's a moment there, which we could really good. That's the very place for that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh but that, I think it'd be, and that could get potentially a part of the mine it. The parking lot, possible. So I think, I would, I would, must Nancy throw something at me, that um we should.
What you said, I'm sorry.
If Nancy doesn't throw something at us, I think that we should consider the revolving fund purchase, she can do that.
So rather than later. So I was just checking the general bylaws, you know, that's a fun thing to do. Um the recreation director, the DPW director, the one who can extend out of.
Okay.
That beach revolving fund, so we can direct one of the two.
I would say, in my opinion, DPW, who's gonna take care of these then? Like, how permanent are they, who's installing, who, who are you planning on installing them?
We, we have a, what do you want?
The supplier, okay, just because they're all, obviously, it's one point two, which, I just wanna make sure they're installed properly, so they're kind of on the other side of every rule. Well, every rule, you're not helping any, what? Yeah, that's probably. Alright, so it sounds like next steps, I'm not hearing everyone, probably, so even if DPW, correct? See if they're willing to put in a request for beach revolving fund, Nancy, you might hear that.
I think the DPW director or the recreation director can spend out of beach revolving fund, so they don't have to. I think the, the recreation director and the DPW director should sit down and talk, make sure that we're on the step ahead. That Nick doesn't have the money.
So have Chris, have Chris meet with them to kind of talk about getting a funding.
Yeah, they'll take one ten fifteen minutes, we just wanna make sure that Nick doesn't have a project in mind that he's already got the beach revolving fund kind of locked up for, then say, well, we took fifteen thousand dollars.
Right.
So special business.
Does that make sense to Chris?
Yeah.
Okay, I think the advice from Karen who's on CPC for years is probably pretty solid, and like, I would get a move.
Yeah.
So if this funding is, you can do it even sooner than wait up.
I mean, I would ultimately, you know, the half loads. When we do a couple of them now, listen, I'm with you, I hate the speed.
This year, it's gonna get.
We can get two, you know, get half of them this year, fine, I think, I was. I was just talking.
We might learn something out of, okay, for your place, one of your utilities.
I totally agree.
Thank you for sticking with us and doing that, the devils and the details.
Sure.
Yeah, it'd be great to get them in this summer, and that's, that's kind of crushed when I heard we were gonna get some school.
Yeah, alright, so um, who's, who's the lead, it's on for beach. You, do you wanna just shoot a note to Nick and Kevin so they can accommodate some time with Chris? So he can meet them and determine if they do go to. Oh, sorry, Nancy, here's.
You can look me in, I'll bring the state contract information, maybe we can kind of.
And Nancy, I will, Nancy.
I was bored, I wanna go too. Shouldn't have that meeting the other day.
Okay.
Too bored to do.
Sounds good, yeah, thanks for, for reevaluating everything and hopefully we get, again, you said the stomach, not all the stomach.
Yeah, I mean, it would be great to have a few at least.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we don't need to vote yet, right, so a little more research. Alright. Nancy?
Yes, sorry.
We have to amend our language, because we left out a sentence, very important sentence.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, the NSB had approved our ballot question vote, but asked it to be then looked at by town council and then by council, because they have no councils to look at it. Uh town councils referred to by council, but by council asked us just to add that one phrase in. Um and that's the same phrase that we added to the article last week, out last week.
So this will be printed on our town ballots.
Yes.
So just for the public, um basically, we are updating the ballot question. So just for the public, basically, we are updating the ballot question uh, to read as follows. Shall a town situa be allowed to exempt from its provisions of proposition two and one half so-called the amounts required to pay for the bonds issued in order to design, construct, and equip a new consolidated fishing havenly elementary school on a site named Uthain Hathaway School on Henley Creek and Wild Road, including the demolition of the existing Hathaway Elementary School on that site and the demolition of the existing fishing elementary school at Warren Aberdeen Drive, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto? You can tell it's a, it's a county council answer. I guess we only need to read the motion, but. Uh, any questions for Nancy?
No.
Somebody want to read the motion now that I've read the entire?
Moved to an end in February thirteen, twenty twenty four. Vote to approve the question Hathaway Elementary School, that exclusion ballot question included the addition of the phrase included in their all costs incidental or related thereto. Then the question for, uh, council's pressing it on March.
Motion by Amy Goodrich, second by Karen Conley, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Nancy. Okay, next on our agenda, we have an municipal employee disclosure request from Frank Snow, who is uh, our chair of the conservation commission. Uh, and the backup really just shows that he's currently working on a project, uh, I think from his professional aspect, and he's looking, um, disclosing himself um, with regards to actually being a voting member um, on the conservation commission, but he honestly will accuse himself of making decision, um, overview of what happens in the property. Okay, um. So you think a large. Take a motion?
It is not a question.
No.
Oh, um. I thought she, uh, this part, right, who's going to be presenting before the conservation office? He can refuse himself, but probably shouldn't present anything.
He says. Unfortunately, he wasn't able to come to that, but. What do we make it, uh, pending that he doesn't present it on its own?
Or you can say, you know, pending ultimate presenting.
Right. Yeah, and we do that. I think I'd be comfortable with that.
Okay.
Want to make the motion then? Move the select board as required by Master Earl Act of three, six, eighty, two, six, eight, section nineteen A, nineteen, I can't. Approve the disclosure exemption under section for non-elected, mistreated, disgraced gentleman, observation commission chair, who accused himself as a voting member.
Do you have a proposal?
Yeah, accused himself as a voting member of the application and, um, and will not present the application to the may on a specific to one sixty four. Motion by Karen Campfield, second, second by Karen Conley, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Yeah. Alright. Next in our discussion is to talk about the delegation of recruiting authority. Over to Jim, our town administrator for outdoor entertainment permits, block party permits, special events, new catering, bartending services, and special licenses for one day liquor. So, Ray, you want to give some background? Before?
Sure, um, Michelle, Jim, and I met on this quite a while ago. Um, our representative at your retreat this year. Um, and you've asked us to take a look at taking some things off the select board agendas to make the meetings go a little. Some of you have commented on previous meetings, why is this meant to be on your agenda? So we looked at anything that we could take off and delegate to the town administrator. We went to legal regarding the one day licenses, which are a lot of them at the end of meetings for years. And this is what we've come up with. So we put together, uh, select board TA office current procedures that we currently do what we do going forward. Uh, would you like me to go through those?
I don't think you need to. Okay, I I think the biggest question probably whether the public's chiming in, when does it kick out? The select board. When, if ever, right? Especially with block parties.
Yeah, I mean, pretty much, you know, the people come in for two seconds and then they go out again. The main thing about block parties, outdoor entertainment permits, and the main reason really that we have those is one, to inform the police and let them know what's going on with you. Uh, two, inform the butters as to what's going on with you. And those processes and procedures would still be in place. Um.
So what if there's, there, there's a butter, um, dissent or whatever, you know, consider.
They would contact the town administrator's office with any questions or concerns. It's in the procedures.
Right.
City police would continue to be informed of all per outdoor entertainment. I mean, if it's a controversial area, we had one, for example, recently on the three H. Where we had a lot of the butters who opposed. Anything like that would come to the law.
But how do you define that for future people? When, like, you're gone, Jim's gone.
Right, it's at the discretion.
Well, that's why we document as procedures. That's why we document as procedures.
Okay.
Um, so any butter, I mean, a butter notice would still inform neighbors, and the neighbor would contact the town administrator office. So once that the neighbors contacted the town administrator office, that's the part to say, this needs to go to the law, there may be more neighbors.
I think we need to include that.
Maybe we have, yeah.
It was, I don't know, Dan?
Yeah, but.
Um. You know, one way to do it is to say, at the discretion of the administrator, I'm not trying to do that because well, I guess I don't think we can talk about, if one person calls up and and the town administrator is able to address the concerns, then they're addressed with a map, but if we have a situation where you get more to the calls, how do we direct the town administrator about things that exactly we said the threshold? Um, whatever it is, I think it should be in the procedures, because that has always been the hesitation in the past is yeah, we want to make sure we want to know today. They still have the opportunity.
Right.
But do we want to donate all of the authority of making the thumbs up, comes down, the town administrator?
I guess my. I guess my question would be, okay. How many of these roughly are getting one person, say, one a butter?
Well, in the past twenty years that I've been here, it's only been twice. Out of all of.
More than, more than one a butter complaint. Or challenging, I'd say.
Yeah. In ten years.
So is the number three? Yeah, I don't know, you know what I mean, it's a three.
Yeah. Well, I think the town administrator would be able to talk if it's controversial. When they, he or she gets calls on.
This town administrator.
Well. I I think that, um. The town administrator would be able to judge if something seemed like it was a really hot potato. So for example, can any of us ever forget the, the farm across the street?
Exactly. What's the act of road?
Yeah, and I, I, I mean, I think that the town administrator seeing something like that, or where you see something like that, or where are in your positions would be able to say, oh, you know what? And is maybe that the town administrator or whoever is administering, yes, we require the applicant to be informed that if they so wish or anyone writing a letter to have a hearing with the select board that we've written.
We don't want to call it hearing.
Well.
That's when that kicks off a whole lot of process.
Well, that's the thing, you can bring the issue to the board. Yes, the discussion.
And then the. Acts number of written, written objections or receiving the town administrator will bring it to the board's attention. Yeah, so I don't think it should be up to the applicant to have a.
No, I said, yeah, we can inform the applicant. They have the right.
Yeah, no.
If they wish to have a fuller discussion.
Hearing.
Discussion.
Uh, and I, I said, I framed that, not that the applicant should have to do that, but if like three butters or four butters or whatever, they should just be there. Yeah.
Voice of concern.
Um. About to start there.
So for the top two, outdoor entertainment and block party, your butter notification takes place. You want to add more than three, the town administrator will refer to the select board.
Yeah, I like that, good. Okay, we just have three is a good number? I have three is a good number? It's only happened twice in three years, ten years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just think there needs to be something in place for residents to air their concerns.
With this.
Well, there is something in place for them to air their concerns. That's the town administrator.
I understand.
But if the town administrator has more than three, as was the case with the farm, as the same.
Right, that's required to have the farm.
Um, that is required to come across.
Yeah, okay.
Is that a good number for you?
At least for me, yeah.
It is, no, it's, yeah.
Okay, well, then three complaints.
Susan, did you have something else you want to add?
Three, yeah, three, I agree on three completely. And then we talked about size. And then, um, in the letter from our attorney, it said, but it wasn't in the policy. She suggested these.
Well, that's a whole other, we're just talking about outdoor entertainment and block party right now.
Okay.
You're talking about one day liquor licenses.
But I guess I'm also, I noticed what about if, is this saying that the town administrator would deny these two, or would they just approve? Is this like a consent thing, or would there be a denial?
In outdoor entertainments and block parties in the ten years I've been here, there's never been a denial.
Okay.
But we're.
But I'm just saying.
We have the authority of the town.
We're giving this authority to, to approve or deny.
Correct. But to your point.
Maybe they shouldn't deny, maybe that should come to the.
A potential denial should go to select.
I'm suggesting possibly it's a potential denial should come to the.
Well, they could, they could appeal my denial.
Right, yeah, something like that.
Because if I say I'm not proving, that's the same as a denial.
Right.
But what's, what's the same?
Yeah, there you go. That's exactly what I'm saying.
Yeah, I just think there needs to be that, that. These that take your town administrator denies, the applicant may, may appeal to the select board.
Okay.
Except the one, that's only for.
Outdoor.
Outdoor just make one block parties.
Yes.
Sure, you can add that, no problem, to the procedure. Okay, so the next one is special events.
And then possibly one other thing, because I know there's only been three, but if there's been issues. So, like, if possibly, like, if the three A comes again. Should that?
Oh, oh.
If there's been, I know that you said there's only been three issues in the past. If there's been issues in the past, should it?
I, I'm correct with TA, yeah.
Okay.
So those were my questions.
Okay, no, that's, it's a different question that I would.
If that farm comes, I'm not touching.
Right, I'll do not. So in that case, we go on, uh, no way it can come to us. Alright, special events?
Special events. So we get special event applications all the time. The first ones are already always approved by the select board in the past. Um, even if it's a small event. Um, the next time it comes to the board, it goes directly to the town administrator for approval, unless it's the St. Patrick's Day, parade, parade, days, or the Knights of Columbus Carnival, those always come to the board. It would continue to come to the board because they're huge events in the field, right? So, um, and we would continue to go through the internal process of police fire, DPW would help, all, all the partners listed. Obtain the certificate of insurance like we always do.
Yep.
Make sure the appropriate fee is paid. We've done away with them, waived the fee because we all voted those, so you haven't seen one in two years. Yes, yes.
Are you going to meet me? Because. I do. What's the definition of large scaling event?
Yeah, we have that in our, our, it's, you know. We have these examples listed below. St. Patrick's Day, parade.
Right, but you're saying, no, on a future large scaling event, um, for the select board. Yeah. What is a future large scaling event? Is it townwide? Is it population?
I'm just thinking devil's advocate, you make yourself into sticky situations when you leave. Well, more than parade doesn't come before you. More than parade.
It does.
Right, no, it doesn't. No, it doesn't. I don't know why, but it doesn't.
Oh, because it's ours, it's town's concert.
Oh, right.
Well, let's take Fall for Situate, more Situate, an example. Every, every year we have Fall for Situate. You approve it the first year, Jim approves it every other, it doesn't come to you.
Right, so again, do we need to define, so we're just talking about everything that we know that exists today in twenty twenty four, right?
I mean, so the town administrator would know if it was a large scale event, which we say you know, basically over a hundred attendees.
Okay, then let's put that in there. Okay, that's what I'm saying. So people, when they come to the, the select board room, know that, alright, I'm having an event that includes more than a hundred people, it's going to be, you know, I need to.
Well, they're not going to decide. We're the decision.
I know, but my point is it needs to be the pressure, okay?
Okay, so over a hundred attendees.
Okay, thank you.
That would include weddings. That's not a special event.
Not a special event.
That's a.
Special event is when they're using town-owned property for an event.
Okay, I define that too. Put that in there. I think it'll help. I think it'll help other people when they're looking, when you're not here, when Jim's not here, I'm just thinking of the future.
No problem.
It's easy a couple words to put in there.
Add definition.
To your party gift, it's pretty air. No, it's just like the contracts all day long. Like, you know.
Yep.
We just have to find some of the stuff, other people, and you're, like, yours aren't going to go.
Well, we were going through it, we, we talked about it all the time internally. Is this a special event? Or is this just an outdoor activity?
Right, there you go.
Michelle and I have this conversation, do you want to?
Takes that off your plate.
A lot. Well, only, only if it's honestly, it's an event or it's a special. Only if it's on town property.
Always on town.
So the one in the backyard on first partial that you heard earlier. Even though it's over a hundred guests, it's not going to come before you, it's on private property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They just came right out to our entertainment.
So maybe it should be special events utilizing public property. You can handle that.
Yes, utilizing public property and things we think should be a special. For example, Michelle and I came to the conclusion that get out to greenwood should be a special event. Even though they're not using public property, they're using an individual property, it's going to create traffic congestion there, right? Last year, you wanted to get a police detail.
Yeah, not for using public property in order to.
They're using public property, getting too impromptu appointments.
Yeah, so it impacts the public way.
So it has a public way, so we said they need to do a special. Yeah, that's.
So that's how it would be defined in this period of over a hundred people. So it's either or, you know, and or.
Yeah.
So on prob, on property and.
I, those are, these are all good questions and good discussion and.
Yeah, so this is. That's why we're here.
Yep, so like when they want, when there was the rally on the front. It wasn't more than a hundred people, but it was in public, so the and or would cover that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like that.
Okay. Um, the next one is a new caterer bar. So, you know, we have on this, new caterers and bartenders, they're periodically coming for you. We always have them submit their profile information, their references, their tip certification, and proof of their life. And if they have all those things, and they have good references, they basically go on our list. So do those people need to come and see you? We think the town administrator should be able to.
I agree. Can you agree on that one?
Yep.
What do you have, Lori?
I do.
Winner.
That's a winner.
That's a winner.
That's a winner.
And then the last one, last one is the one day beer one. Um, and this is, you know, the fifty dollar occupation fee, you took your liability insurance, you took certification. We always notify city police and the ABCD on Halloween's when they come before you. We've never not approved one.
Yeah.
Ever in ten years.
We, we do have a cap on the number of one day laws.
Yes.
Per, per.
Second.
Short.
Per year, thirty.
Yes.
That's in, it's in the mass general laws.
That question has.
Yeah, it's in the mass general laws.
Restaurant versus, it's just a special event.
Yes.
Susan, is this the one you had a question about, the letter from our legal council?
Pretty good.
This is the one that you're talking about, that if, if it's gonna be denied by the town administrator, it needs to go to the select board.
Yeah. Yeah, it needs confirmation.
Okay, so is that language in there?
Yes.
Okay. But I actually have a thing. If there are denials, it sounds like there are.
Well, if there are any concerns, the town administrator should refer to the select board. We can put that in the overall procedure.
That's good, yeah.
Concerns or denials should be referred to the select board for discussion.
Yeah.
All right, by the town administrator. So we can revise these if you're in agreement. We can make these revisions and we can invoke them tonight with the revisions we discussed. And we can bring it back to the next meeting to, to vote whatever you desire.
What the board likes to do.
I'm comfortable with the Americans adding.
As is, as noted, yeah.
As of it.
So, one other question, do we need, is there a bylaw change that we need?
Well, there's a bylaw change for something different, which I wasn't really gonna get into tonight. Because we're meeting with town council tomorrow.
Okay.
Karen, myself, Michelle, I'm meeting with town council tomorrow. On all the liquor policy, select board policies, in a bylaw change, we found an error in our bylaws that needs to be fixed.
Okay.
So we're gonna have the attorney write. The new bylaw and put it on the agenda of the fall special town meeting.
Okay, great. Um, would someone like to make a motion, uh, ensuring that we indicate, you know, with the modifications discussed during your part? Eric?
Uh, would the select board delegate the approval of the following permits to the town administrator? As amended, um, by the select board in this discussion. For outdoor entertainment permits, block party permits. Special events excluding large scale as defined by our methods. New catering, bartending services, and special licenses for one day.
Is a motion, is there any further discussion? All right, second. Second, by Andrew Goodrich, all in favor, aye aye, all opposed? And once, one, so once we revise the policies, we'll immediately apply. Just to make sure you're all in favor.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome.
All right, so to continue with the policy discussion.
More work for Jim.
Maybe Jim.
Well, you know, and I, I do wanna just clarify, it's not just to make our meeting shorter, it's to be able to do more productive discussions on topics that we generally wanna talk about. Instead of spending an hour and a half approving all these permits too, because we often don't get to put topics that you just wanna talk about.
Driving people.
Right, right.
Because they already have.
Except.
A lot of paperwork.
Okay. All right, so, uh, this agenda item was requested by Karen Canfield. Um, and all the work that they're doing on our policies, so. Do we receive Karen?
Thank you, Karen, and thank you for your leadership on the prior matter. Um, so continuing our discussions from last week, uh, right now I have been going from that spreadsheet of, 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 of existing policies. Oh, which I brought in visual, this is, no, it's, this is the book of policies that exist right now. It is an answer.
We appreciate it.
It's the work you're doing still. Um, anyway, so this is a good effort, so what is for you today, for the most part, um, for the exception of, um. The American disabilities act group, which is dangerous, are others that we've gone through and said, we don't need them for various reasons. The rain that with, um, the head of our HR department and the over the personnel, and the first with, um. The ones under the personnel categories that are the first, one, two, three, four, five, as outlined in the motions. Um, so we can go through those probably quickly, so starting. The first, we're gonna skip the first two, um, as we did last week, we're not ready to talk about those. So beginning with number three on the backup. The reserve fund transfer is already required in. Do you want me to go through these all at once or we're gonna just pass it each one?
Well. Maybe we should go by po, by policy number thirty six dash one eighty.
Yeah, that's what I'm just saying, but I was about to skip that, just point of order asking whether we can, you want me to just present them all and we can ask the questions if there are any, or?
One.
Sure. So three dash ninety eight reserve fund transfer, it's already required by, um, Mass Law, certainly. It was created by this board in ninety eight, it's not longer necessary. Um, we had the discussion last, a little bit.
No way to count from starting, if you don't think.
That's all right.
We already did, on the spreadsheet, we already did the top, I was at the, the March twelfth meeting. So we're not looking at those two.
I'm sorry, yeah, no, the top two.
No, the top two, we don't need, we're, we're not looking at any of the ones on the top of the spreadsheet. Because we reviewed all of those at the March twelfth meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, we needed to.
So we're going down to the March twenty sixth meeting.
Personnel match.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
So the first one.
Three ninety eight.
I just wanna make sure we're all in the right place, because there's a lot of.
Yeah.
I know, I, I didn't print it out, that's my fault. Okay, so yes, so thirty six ninety eight, thank you, is the personnel match. And that's in here. Uh, the personnel are potentially responsible, the administration, um, important, from time to time, should adopt certain personnel policies, you can see on page fifty seven. Uh, that is. Uh, that is currently defined in our charter, though it's not unnecessary because of those. The next one, twenty two ninety eight, in a police details. Lauren, I don't, I did not get the background on that one.
Yeah, twenty two dash ninety eight. Um, we don't even know why this is in here, we, we don't have a problem getting anybody to pay police details.
Somebody had a problem once, it became a policy.
Someone had a problem one time and it became a policy.
Yes, pay for any future work at the date and time of actual detail checks.
Yeah.
One of the exceptions that would be. Um, interesting.
No, and.
Yeah.
So our recommendation is to delete this unnecessary pause. We have no problem getting police details paid for now.
Did that, I'm gonna ask a really dumb question.
Are you giving me? Are you giving me, do you have a problem?
Foundation, we do have a problem with police details being paid.
But they told me they get paid.
Do they, does this, does this also address, do people ever expect to be paid cash?
Do you think? They asked me.
And this protects us to pay them checks, I'm just wondering what happens to that situation.
Right.
I mean, they do, and they even have.
Yeah.
Yeah, they.
No, I mean, not now, I'm sure.
In my profession, like, they're happy people who pay their details in cash.
There happen.
Yeah, it's prime of mine, but.
I mean, this does not hold anybody's feet to the fire immediately. At all. This just says, it said business is gonna raise for paying a police detail, lotion required to pay for any future work, basically upfront.
Is that an account in the department?
The police can do that now, they can make them pay upfront.
Yeah, I mean, if, whether there's a policy or not, I, I did have that in a, a, a prior community, and we just made them, uh, we made them pay by sort of by check. It's never good to have insufficient funds when you pay for your police detail.
Do they pay in direct, like, as they're standing out there waiting in the traffic?
No.
They shouldn't, Eric.
The police, police department sends them an invoice and they pay the invoice. If they have a habitual problem, just like in the field, with, just like recreation with cooking and deals.
Yeah.
You know, then they make them, then they make them pay upfront.
Then they always pay that. Right.
But we don't need a select board policy.
But that's not a policy, I was just gonna say, that's a policy for the department that is.
Correct, no.
Well, exactly, it's a, so let's say you invoice somebody for something else, they don't pay, what happens?
Then we take.
The balance.
Right, then the balance goes out.
Right, I'm not understanding this, so I think this is like.
Which is why it's on this list, because why do we have this?
But the question is, like, a lot of these policies, they're not necessarily should be select board policies, they should be the policy of the financial departments.
Unanswered. So what does it mean, just to help me understand this, delete no issues collecting?
No issues collecting.
Meaning delete the policy.
We're paying them.
No, I know what you mean, but what is no issues collecting?
We don't have any issues collecting the police detail fees.
Well, and the other, that's not the full answer, so the full answer is, it isn't, it isn't identified issue, it probably was at some point, somebody paid cash or whatever, and he's, he didn't pay.
Currently.
But it's handled by a financial policy, it's also just not necessarily because.
As a select board.
As a select board policy.
Okay, okay.
I think that was insured.
Thank you.
Um, four ninety eight collective bargaining, wait, did I skip one? Oh, yes, I did, sorry, uh, forty seven oh two personnel correspondence. This is directed from the select board that if any information is presented on personnel, that it's to be sent to their people. They're sent to, um, team of town administrator, and. Right now it goes to the HR director, so it's one of those, you're like, why, why is this here?
Right.
Um, because, when you try to think about, okay, what does that mean? So somebody writes a letter about, no one, but let's say somebody wrote a letter to, oh, I'll do it differently, about Lorraine. To mend her for her work, that should go into personnel department, and this is to make sure that it gets there, right? I mean, that's the point. More importantly, if somebody has a complaint about, and writes to a department head. The department head should make sure that the HR person has that in the files. And that is, is it in the personnel policy term now, or is it just practice?
After the backup, the policy was, anytime any HR agent comes to the office, they have.
Quite practice.
And this is probably, we did not have a chart or anything, but it was.
Correct.
But it was.
And O two.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, thanks. The next one, uh, is four ninety eight collective bargaining, uh, all, we go for all the contracts, it's, it's, it's a redundant policy of this.
Correct.
Um, next is fifty one oh nine technology use policy. Um, which is a program that I already agreed, like, we had it approved, and, uh, the personnel policies.
You're just gonna update it with two oh.
Yeah, this is all the stuff that's all blended into the, uh, between personnel and, um, personalities and workings.
Yeah.
And individual contracts and all of that stuff.
So we're recommending to delete this one.
We're gonna delete this one as well, which doesn't mean we don't think that's what should be.
No, I understand, but it's probably, I'm just trying to make sure.
Right, right.
Right.
Yeah.
It will be an acceptable use policy, it will be incorporated into personnel policies, it will include duos, social media.
Yep.
And all of the appropriate IT policies involved in my workshop, I will.
Okay.
And this probably was done when there was no.
Exactly.
Policies, so.
We didn't have an IT.
It was.
Right, we don't have an HR.
We remember those days.
It was absolutely. It was like, yeah, it was absolutely a rep.
Who beats an IT?
Needed at the time.
Yeah.
But, but now it's evolved and it's just going to spread out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions on this side?
No.
So those are all the policies that Karen and myself, uh, felt should be, that are obsolete. And or incorporated in other places that we discussed.
Okay. I'm not hearing any objection by the board on any of your determinations of those.
Karen, the next one, the Americans with disabilities.
Yeah. Yeah, that one, I would, I would like to table, because I would like to present the board with what the revisions will be before we would consider. Uh, I just to bring it to your attention, that. As written twenty, I'm sorry, yeah, twenty seventeen, um. It's just not up to date and that was re revised, so we'll bring that back to the board in the language.
Okay.
Well, I was looking for permission from the board to revise the policy.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
That's what this motion is, move to revise select board policy sixty one dash seventeen.
Uh, but we could do it that way, or we could bring forth the revised.
That's what I'm.
That's true, well, yes, so is, is there any objection, I guess you're right, you can do it either. We can either draft something, you can send it to as a policy, and then we send one take the other. I don't, I don't think.
Very simple, are you just updating it?
Yeah, it's, it's a complicated policy, which is, it's a two part policy, because the, it's all encompassing right now, it needs to be two. It needs to be. If ADA related to employees ADA needs, um, work equipment ADA needs for a personnel policy. And separately, it needs to be an ADA town issue process.
Like capacity issue, right.
Like we're on a way out of type issue. So the way it's written, it needs to be completely revised, which is why we were asking the motion to be able to revise the policy. It's probably gonna end up two separate policies.
Revised and future review.
Yeah, and then it will come back to the board.
Yeah.
As a new policy, if you ever, if you want to approve.
Okay.
I think that's how we have to get it, because it's so different.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's what the, how the motion is written, unless there's an objection and you wanna keep it the way it is. Okay. No. Um, the next is sixty seven twenty three prohibited reimbursement, uh, this is, uh, this is where Nancy won't let us vote on, and this was just approved, and.
Oh, you just can't have a.
But we just. He's feeling, oh, baby.
It was a loophole, and I had a little lip in my mouth, she closed it.
So if you did that.
Oh, marvelous. This we, we were. That's what we're part of, we wanted to bring it, you know, to make sure that there wasn't objection for us to, there wasn't any reason to, is that that's. And, uh, the last one we're not talking about is already fifteen ninety eight, uh, Lauren?
This is the last one we're gonna talk about, is sixty seven dash twenty three, at this meeting. Which one are you talking about?
The last one, fifteen ninety eight.
That's not.
No, that's not on the schedule.
Yeah, I was gonna say, wait, that's not on there.
Just gonna say, I'll try a little bit, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so what we're asking for the board's consideration is the deletion of. Um, mostly, well, if they're all personnel, non applicable personnel policy of veteran existence. Addition of, of the ADA policy as driven, and, uh, reaffirmation, still move after by the time it's done.
Okay, so fifteen ninety eight, we're not coming yet, got it, okay. Okay.
So moved.
Like a motion?
No, yeah, can you do a motion?
Uh, move to delete select board policies thirty six dash ninety eight, twenty two dash ninety eight, forty seven dash, uh, four two. Four dash ninety eight, fifty one dash one nine, which are obsolete. Document in the town charter, personnel policies, boarding contracts, or mass general laws. Further move to revise select board policy sixty one dash seventeen, Eric, this is only the active procedure. And further move to keep select board policy sixty seven dash twenty eight, twenty three, recently approved, the May thirtieth, twenty twenty three.
Motion by Andrew Goodrich, second.
Second.
Second by Susan Harrison, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay. Thank you for your work again on that, it's a lot of work, and. So happy we're with policy one first on our board.
Hopefully, the next meeting will be all the liquor license policies.
Yeah. It's Lauren mentioned, tomorrow, it's tomorrow, I'm too outraged to be in the town council, to go to those. So as we go forward, they'll probably left to review, but more to talk about.
Yeah.
Kind of just keep chipping away.
We'll keep chipping away.
I think that's.
It's fun.
Um. Next, we have the twenty twenty four annual renewal of common liquor licenses for Superior Lobster. Oh, here we go.
That's the Hopper Pund?
No, it's, I'm delayed in order, did I miss one?
Hopper Pund goes to next.
Oh, dinghy future, okay, sorry, that's.
Uh, we didn't receive, we did receive the documents for notice and zap, so we had to totally include this agenda.
Okay, gotcha.
And it's just the dinghy that we see.
The dinghy future.
Yeah.
But fairly.
Uh. And everybody here, we have the dinghy future?
No, they don't.
Okay.
We don't usually.
Okay, um, do you have a motion?
Move that the select board go train in the annual common liquor license for Atocha Kitchen and Company DEA Academy, effective April twenty twenty three, March.
Second. Motion by Karen Ali, second by Karen Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, now it's the common with for Superior Lobster.
That's a common law.
That's right. That's right, okay. Motion. Move to approve the renewal of the common regulars, superior lobster LLC, seven months till that. Motion by Karen Canfield. Second. Second by Karen Conley, all in favor?
Aye.
And we already did the poll hours, we sent those from eight AM to six PM, so we're done with that. Next, we have one day wine vault licenses for Black Apron at the Citri Harbor Community Building. Uh, Superior Servers at the Citri Maritime Center. Rital Shower and Superior Services at the Maritime Center for Birthday Parties.
Right on.
Yes.
Didn't we use now, we've already authorized historically in terms of that.
One day.
Well, let's just take care of tonight, I think since maybe, well, she had to put it on there because the T.
I didn't know.
We said no, then.
Yeah.
Right, so you'd have to delay it even further.
Exactly.
So we don't want to do that. And I. Yes.
Move to approve one day wine vault license for Black Apron at Private Events, Citri Harbor Community Building, forty four, Air Row, March three of twenty twenty four, from one PM to five PM. Further move to approve one day wine vault license for Superior Servers for Private Events. Rital Shower, uh, Citri Maritime Center, one day to at Verdaske Row, two eight, twenty twenty four, from eleven AM to two thirty PM. Further move to approve one day wine vault license. Superior Servers for Private Event Birthday at the Citri Maritime Center, one day to at Verdaske Row, July third, twenty twenty four, from six, will be eight AM to ten thirty.
Motion by Andrew Goodrich. Second by Susan Harrison. Any discussion? None. All in favor? Aye, all opposed? Uh, liaison reports. Anybody want to start?
We have your station in here, we have um, still have the rain barrels. I guess we'll get to, I'll talk a little more about the other thing.
Oh, you will. Okay, okay. Susan?
Let's see, oh, all the dinghy stuffs were everyone's, so there's no vacant ones this year.
Oh, wow.
Good, that option, so that went well. Um, Morikai Lincoln survey is posted. Um, we've already had seven hundred and thirty seven people respond. And it is still, it is up for um till the fifteenth.
Can you block duplicates on that?
Yes, we have blocked duplicates, I already tested it, I already tested.
Okay, I do too.
I do too.
Alright, they say no, or you can't do it again.
We, we, um, prior to posting the survey, we did a um, a mock survey and had the um, committee and then Lauren. So, and then we got rid of those results and posted the survey. So we're getting a lot of good response, um. And also, thank you on the question of, but did you vote for it at town meeting? Yes or no, or didn't attend? Oddly, there's a lot of people who did attend who are also submitting responses, so we're getting, we're really getting the. So I think that's good. It's spring, so they're starting to put the wisters back in.
Great.
Yes. Sign of spring. That's all I have. Excellent. Andrew, you're done, right?
I'm done.
Karen Conley, anything?
Um, here forty four, uh, had a, a meeting with the postal zone management people. It was a slightly difficult meeting. Uh, they have agenda, as we all know. So. That is just.
Management.
This is the entire year full of permitting agency. And I believe C Z M is the one that decided we have to do a replication of a wildlife area up on their. So they're, they're the they're not an easy group, um, but I'm sure it will work out and um that's, that's it. Oh, Jen, we did get a determination. I don't, I don't know what the explanation was, but one of our districts got approved by the state for this multi-family zoning MBTA issue on brainwash was, they said no.
Well, when they had that one, because we're.
It's, it's.
We're very common or in compliance.
It's, 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 it's impossible to understand why they said what they said. They approved North City and they said they weren't going to be brainwashed, which is.
You mean, you mean the, like, word article, the zoning article?
Yeah, yeah.
But, but I'm not worried about it.
It's, it's ridiculous.
I'm sorry.
Anyway, just thought I'd give you the heads up that, you know, again, it's dealing with some of the regulators and the agencies that especially in this case where they're trying to promote housing.
And they, or are they just trying to get?
Just thought I gave you that.
I'm just curious, because they're promoting housing, our burden is starting to not get. I'm asking for a crowd, I'm asking for a crowd, listen to Jim.
We had a good presentation. State, we're doing that, or we.
Okay, alright. I, I do have to thank Jim for his appearance on W G H.
That's what I'd be on channel two.
Just, hey, it's better than this than Zoom, right?
It's, it's, it's not an easy, easy issue for people to understand, and it was very clear about it, and I thought that he was doing a good job, and I think him for his appearance on G B H and the planning board, as they continue to produce.
Thanks for saying that.
Yeah.
Karen Canfield?
Yeah, and you can no longer say you have a face for reading out.
I do.
Um, just a quick, I uh that ore, the Navy ore, that the trust that we, we were going to be installing with the streamer at the library, that's there's this like whiz bang case they're building for, or display, it's actually pretty cool, be able to spin it around and all this. But I just bring it to your attention because at some point, probably late April, there's gonna be some kind of available Sarah pocket. Really excited it. And that it is pretty cool. Um, and the legislature has actually approved the charter to be, to be led, to be filed as a bill for um a pro-life legislative, they finally asked council came to a conclusion, I don't think I go through yet, so it's yet, and it's, I only thought of leaving for the legislature charter. It only took three years. So.
Good work.
Sunday. Fourth May of twenty five. Uh, just as a D E I update, they have a meeting this, this week, earlier this week. And I would, they're looking over their priorities for twenty twenty four, and I would anticipate they're looking to understand as you look through your policies, procurement policies and whatnot, to make sure that as they have a D E I lens. Um, so I know, you're gonna be with Tom, we're gonna talk about what that looks like. But I think they want to ensure that systematically we're okay, you know, as they've done so much research and that, that's. So they are also kind of contemplating, working at, and thought it. But my opinion is someone, the others agree with me, that's exactly what they've been doing for the past, you know, two or three years, so that's, you know, for future discussion, but they are kind of planning, looking at that as well, similar to what the schools did. They're fully working, seeing everything, just in the initial stages. Yeah, I'll just.
Sound seal included, you know?
Oh, yeah, that comes out very well.
Um, I'll just, I don't think I mentioned this, we were trying to, policy is as appropriate, and we are, like, we have a, a, a a policy that is, should be the waterway, should be the D E I, should be whatever, uh, we're, we're making sure that they're included in the conversation before we come with the recommendation. And I mean, I will, we talked on the topic, just, you know, about that.
Yeah, cause I, Nancy, with your procurement law, I'm just curious, you know, there are a lot of state laws with regards to using uh minority, you bet you know, businesses, does that trickle down to the town?
Yeah.
When we do smaller.
State contracts.
Yeah.
Um, have requirements when they go off the pyramid. And then there's supplier diversity program, this is one just done.
Yeah.
And then the designer selection, um, we have to specify a certain percentage of.
You do, okay. They'll probably be asking to. Okay. Alright, um, correspondence? Samantha?
We did have some correspondence, um. Yes, it is a sign of spring, but integrated vegetation management for the commuter rail, so we got a notice on that, um. The brush removal as well as um some herbicide application, and then also National Grid again sent their annual notification for um more vegetation removal with a map as well. And then we also, and I think Andrew wants to discuss this too, we've got the Plymouth County Parking Quarterly newsletter. So, and when we were at the Plymouth County meeting, they discussed their parking program um pretty extensively. Specifically, there was a detailed legislative update on some bills, some parking bills that are market, working their way through committees, um, including one that will allow towns to increase um, increase allowable fines, as well as um specific to handicap, being able to increase by like four hundred billion dollars, so that one's a big one. Um.
Just did that, so we just.
Yeah, well, we did, we did.
Three hundred.
Right, yeah, this will let us go higher. This will increase those maxes, so those two are getting favorable readings, however, the um means test for parking fines is not getting favorable readings, so um Plymouth County was also not fair of that.
So in other words, if you park in a BMW, you pay more than if you park in a.
No, I don't think it was related to the type of your car, I think it was related to um if you have the means to pay for the tickets and not allowing um municipalities or or states to boot the car. So, no, interesting.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not sure we have any boots in situation.
Oh, I don't know that we do, but. Um, anyway.
Except the boots they're made for walking.
Yeah. Anyway.
The rain boots.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they do, that's one of their programs that they highlight.
They do, yeah.
They do a lot of parking enforcement for towns throughout the Commonwealth, um, even outside of. So, um. Yeah, and those were, those were the correspondence. We did, um, we did also get a correspondence, and this was in my, in our email today from the um state senators asking um Poltech to stop the evaporation in Philamasty, the, 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 the. The method of exposing that um, that wastewater, and that was from like Sashore and Cape Island. The Senate. This one, yeah, so, it's great.
That's all I have.
Alright.
Thank you. Um, so I will um take a motion to accept the minutes for our joint advisory board's select board meeting that will come on March twelve, twenty twenty four, as written. Along with moving to accept the minutes from our select board meeting that was called on March twelve. By Karen Conley, oh, second by Karen Conley, it's not.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, sorry. Alright. Uh, anything else there? So, uh, we are going to move into executive session. So I am going to declare that the select board moves into executive session pursuant to purpose three of the open meeting law to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, and I declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on negotiating position of the select board in connection with this matter. The board will not convene in open session. Uh, this is with regards to the shellfish agriculture issue. Uh, so would someone like to make a motion? Move that the select board go to executive session pursuant to, pursuant.
Pursuant.
Pursuant to purpose three of the open meeting law, discuss strategy is good nation, I declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on negotiating position of the select board in connection with this matter, the board will not convene in open session um on what we're discussing shellfish agriculture.
Motion by Karen Canfield, we go call votes, second by Susan Morrison.
Okay, and Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Ms. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Kim?
Yeah.
Ms. Pam?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.